We're live.
All right, thank you Scott. Very good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board. We call a meeting to order at 6:59. If we can rise and take a break.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so before we go on to our school board meeting, I do want to make notice that we do have two board members that could not make it tonight on the phone. When I say your name, if you can say you're here and if you're alone. Dan Cootier?
I am here and I am alone.
Thank you. Janelle O'Briar?
I'm here alone.
Thank you, Janelle. All right, do we have correspondence?
We do this evening. Just a few things I'd like to share with the board. We received a number of thank you cards from bus drivers and a number of other people that were very appreciative of the nice, small recognition that we did. And there's also a letter here from Principal McBride thanking Annapolis Supermarket for $1,000 donations to Goffstown.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, commendations, good news. I feel that Mrs. McLeod is not here, but does anybody else have commendations to give?
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to acknowledge, and I know Brian will be talking about the buses later, but a number of parents have taken part in helping organize and forming the social media. It's really been pretty amazing to see people join the movement. And also, parents acknowledging the hardship of teachers and making sure that they're appreciated. So I just wanted, yeah, not everybody's on social media, and sometimes it's not always positive, but we've got a lot of good stuff happening.
Great, thank you, Reddick. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Open to public comments, but I don't see any tonight. So we'll move on to the approval of December 20th school board meeting minutes. Does everybody have a chance to look at them? Anybody see anything? If I see nothing, I'll take a motion.
Motion approved.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, who's Shane?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? If you see none, I'll do both call Reddick.
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. So tonight we have a couple of presentations. The first one is going to be from our auditor. If you want to come up, Cheryl, and you guys should have it in your packets of stuff tonight.
So I'd like to welcome Cheryl Kraft from Plott against Anderson. And I'd also like to recognize Laura Taylor, our Assistant Business Administrator. Laura does the majority of the work in preparation for the audit, working with the auditor. So Laura's here to assist Cheryl to answer any questions the board may have. And with that, welcome Cheryl. And I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you.
For being with us.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be back here and to present the audit and to go over. Just, I want to mention that the, from when I was here probably three years ago, the district has come a long way. When I was first here, we had several findings that we had to go over and get through. And I want to, I'm pleased to say that you did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your audit. So you should all be commended. The business office once again was wonderful to work with. This year I did have a rotation of staff. So your in charge on Goffstown was Sherri Bradstreet, and she's also our federal compliance manager for the firm. So she led the charge. I was over here supervising, and we also had several staff auditor changes. So we like to not only change up our procedures and what we do, but we like to change up our staff because it gives everyone, it gives the audit a fresh perspective. So, but again, we couldn't have done it and get it back to you this timely without the cooperation and the assistance from the business office. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So with that, on page one and two of, actually, I think it's one, two, and three now. The opinion letter seems to get longer and longer. This is the, and actually next year, when you look at the opinion letter, they have changed, they're going forward, they've changed the format. So your opinion will be in the first paragraph. It will never, it will no longer be in the body down in the middle of the report. It will be the first thing you see. But at the bottom of page one, you will notice, the district did receive an adverse opinion on the governmental activities. For the major general fund and grants funds, you received an unmodified opinion. And then on the aggregate remaining funds, again, an unmodified opinion. Unmodified is the, is a clean, what we call a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you can receive. The adverse opinion on the governmental activities was due to the fact that the district has not yet received an actuarial study on your OPEB for the local portion. You do receive an actuarial study through the New Hampshire Retirement System for the district portion, but there's also a local portion that needs to be evaluated, and that not, has not yet been done. I can say that you are in a great group of other clients we audit who also have not incurred the expense to have that done. So you are not alone. There's many other districts that choose not or do not perform that valuation. This audit also refers to the single audit, which we do have additional opinions on the single audit that we perform in the back of the report. Because you receive an expend over $750,000 annually, we have to perform what we call the single audit in accordance with uniform guidance. So we have to test the general, there's 14 general requirements, depending on what grants we have to test or what requirements we also have to test. Most commonly, we test for timeliness of reporting, cost principles, allowable costs. We also, depending on if it is something that is a program that is shared through other districts, we have to tri- test for subrecipient monitoring. So there's many requirements we have to test for. And I can say that with your single audit, you received an unmodified opinion on your single audit. So again, everything we tested was fine, and we didn't have to issue a modification. So again, the district should be commended for that. On page 15 of the report, this is the, this is your district's balance sheet. This is prior to being blended, because under GASB 34, we have governmental activities. I don't typically spend too much time on those. I feel most boards want to get into what, what happened with the operating fund for the year, the general fund. So that's kind of where I put most of my focus. But the first column on the left-hand side on page 15 is the district's general fund. And you can see, at the end of the year, there was a total of $6.1 million in assets, 1.3 million in liabilities, and then 4.8 million in fund balance. Fund balance, the, is broken down into five categories in accordance with GASB 54. And if you would turn to page 39, we have a further breakdown of what makes up those different categories. The nice thing about the notes, you've got your financial statements, and then you have your note disclosures. So if you question a large number on any of these financials, you can go to the notes and read further into what makes up those numbers. So in this case, in the general fund, on the first column in note 17, the non-spendable balance is made up of inventory and prepaid items. The committed fund balance is made up of expendable trust fund money. Again, in accordance with GASB 54, your expendable trust funds are blended with the general fund due to the fact that the general fund funds the majority of those trust funds. So they, once, if something is funded more than 50%, it gets blended with the fund that its funding is from. So in this case, the general fund. There were voted appropriations in March of 2021 that we set aside, just so that you know that money is committed going forward of $200,000. The assigned fund balance was made up of encumbrances. Your retained fund balance of $665,000. And then district-related student activity funds. So there are two types of student activities. There are those that are funded strictly by the students, and then there are a few that are funded by the district. So we have to reallocate how those student activity funds are reported. The student allocated student activities are reported now as a special revenue fund, and they can be seen further in the back, which I'll go over in a moment. And then your unassigned fund balance that would be used to reduce the taxes is $3.3 million. On page 17, this is your income statement, if you will, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And again, you can see that at the, at the bottom of the first column for the general fund, you started the year with $3,37,956, and you ended the year with total fund balance of $4,874,323. So you had an overall increase of $1.8 million. On page 47, and I apologize for all the page flipping. There's no easy way to do this. I've been doing this a long time, and this is the easiest way I've found. But on page 47, this is your schedule of estimated and actual revenues for your general fund. This is your budget versus actual for your revenues. And you'll see at the bottom of the third column that you received 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars more than what you anticipated to collect. That came in primarily through tuition and miscellaneous income. That was a large source of that. Now, on page 48, this is your statement of schedule of appropriations, expenditures, and encumbrances. We, this is one schedule that I particularly like because it shows the encumbrances that you carried forward from the prior year that get added to the appropriations, less the expenditures that occurred during the year, as well as encumbrances going into the year that you are now in, your '21-'22 year. Things, purchase orders, contracts that weren't spent prior to June 30th that you carried forward and were spent or are being spent in this current year. So as you can see in the last column, you actually underspent your budget, including the encumbrances, by $2,276,234. That largely coming from the instruction lines and support services. Then on page 49, this is the analysis of that unassigned fund balance. You started the year with $2,373,432. From that, you used 1.7 million to reduce the tax rate, and you also appropriated for use in 2021 $200,000. Added to that number is your budget surplus. So that number, the budget surplus for revenue on schedule one, that was on page 47, gets added to the unexpended balance of appropriations on page 48 of $2.2 million to give you an overall budget surplus of $3.5 million. From that number, we have to adjust fund balance. There are five different types, as we discussed a little earlier, of fund balance. So we have to adjust the various categories. In this case, we had an increase in non-spendable fund balance due to inventory and prepaids. And then we had the increase in assigned fund balance to report that contingency money that you set aside, the $665,000, that in case you have, you need it for an emergency, or it can be turned back next year for tax rate purposes, to give you the ending unassigned fund balance of $3,335,402. All right. On page 50 and 51, this is the breakdown of your other special revenue funds, capital project fund, and permanent trust funds during the year. Because these don't rise to the level of being material to the district individually, they get, they get reported on a supplemental schedule, schedules four and five. And then the total columns are brought forward onto pages 15 and 17 in the front as other governmental funds. So the total columns on page four is carried forward to page 15 as other governmental funds. And likewise, on page 51, the total column is carried forward to page 17 under the other governmental funds column. So if you wanted to know, well, what, what made up, for example, on page 15, the cash balance for the other governmental funds, you could go back to page 50 and get the breakdown on the balance sheet there. The largest portion of that cash is your student activity funds. Again, under GASB 84, last year, we now report your student activity funds as a special revenue fund. And then we further break down your student activity funds on schedule six and schedule seven. In the prior years, they reported as an agency fund, and they were just additions and deductions. Now, because they're special revenue, we report revenues and expenditures. Also, a balance sheet that could include receivables, payables, and fund balance if they are there. Finally, on page 57, this is the summary of the auditor's results of your single audit in accordance with uniform guidance. I like this section because it kind of takes that whole single audit section in the back and summarizes it on one page. So again, it notes that you had an unmodified opinion on all of the district's major funds and aggregate remaining fund information, but you did have the adverse opinion on the governmental activities. There were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no noncompliance with state statutes or federal guidelines in relation to your financial statements. Same thing for the federal awards section. No material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and you received an unmodified opinion on all of your grants. The grants that we did test, because we determined which grants we have to test, we have to do a determination. And this year, we tested the special education cluster and the education stabilization funds that are COVID-19 related funds. You were considered a low-risk, actually, you, the, the district is not considered a low-risk auditee because you had findings in the past, two years ago, you had significant deficiencies and I think a material weakness. So in a three-year cycle, if you have any type, any such findings, you don't qualify as a low-risk auditee. I would say probably next year, you'll qualify, which requires less testing on, on the federal grants. And then there were no financial statement findings, and there were no, at the bottom, and there were no federal award findings as well. So again, you should be commended because I don't always have such good news when I go and do a presentation. So with that, that's kind of my overview, my, kind of my high-level review of the audit report. And I didn't know if anyone had any questions for me on the audit.
Dan, do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
If we, we can refer back to page 49, and our vote to retain $665,000, where do we show the liquidation of the prior year?
That is, because we, in the prior year, we got to, we got to looking at this. And we reported it in the prior year as, in two pieces. We showed the unassigned fund balance overall, and then we had the unassigned, restricted or held for contingency. This year, we decided to do the increase and reclassify it from unassigned to assigned. So it's a journal entry that we make. So that's why there's the increase this year for the $665. But typically, it just washes through, in the prior years, it would just wash through unassigned fund balance because it still remained in, unassigned in total. It just was broken down into two different portions of unassigned fund balance.
Are you getting it?
So in effect, no.
Go ahead.
So in effect, next year, well, it almost looks like we, we put $665,000 away, and we really didn't. It was a very minimal change. And so there's no note on here to show that we did a very minimal change. So next year, we should see if we do the same thing.
Yes.
Which show only any additional or less.
Correct.
That we do, correct?
Correct. And that's part of the reason why we decided to break it out the way we did this year, so that you would be able to see the increase or decrease in that number.
Good, thank you.
So going forward, you will see that.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Ellen?
Yeah, I don't even know if this is in here. So if you say, that doesn't part of this, just, and I'm done. Our booster clubs, particularly here at the high school, do a lot of fundraising, and I don't know if they consider donations, or they just go ahead and purchase whatever they need for the various clubs and athletic events and stuff. Are those monies included in here, those kind of donations?
No.
No. Those are above and beyond.
If the, if the booster club donates money to the district for the student activity funds, that money would be included in the revenues for the student activity funds.
Okay, but if they go and purchase uniforms, or if they purchase the footballs or whatever, that's not part of this at all.
Correct.
They do it on their own. Okay, thank you.
Correct. Because they're an independent organization, separate from the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Jared?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. For the adverse finding that we have, in order to have that change to a non-adverse finding, how often does that audit have to occur? Is this just a one-time thing, or every five years?
You, typically, depending on when you contract with the actuary, it can be every two or three years. You would have to work that contract out. But they can do it either two, every two or three years, do the projection, and we can use that report for that period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
And Cheryl, can I just clarify, with respect to the actuarial study, this is something that this board and administration has supported not doing. Can you let the board know what the cost of doing that actuarial study would be if we were to, go ahead and procure that?
Sure.
Just approximately?
Yeah, I would say probably for a district this size, it could be anywhere between $5,000 and $10,000.
Thank you. And just so the board realizes, that's why we haven't done that actuarial study historically.
May I ask, what does that get us, if we did that, beyond what we're getting here from this?
If you go back to, if you wouldn't mind, page one.
Just give me a page number.
What it does is that actuarial study will give us the information we need to report one additional liability on the financials, as well as maybe, if, depending on how it flows, the, the study comes out, we could be reporting additional deferred inflows of resources and, which is an asset. So you would have an additional asset, possibly a liability, and a deferred inflow. Those numbers would then, in effect, impact your net position on Exhibit A, but up or down. Then, it would impact your opinion. So on page one, that summary of opinions down below would disappear because then you would have unmodified opinions across the board. And the, on page two, that first paragraph at the top of page two, the basis for adverse opinion, that would be removed, as well as the next paragraph, adverse opinion, would be removed, so that you would get a straight unmodified opinion for the financial statements of the district as a whole. But right now, a lot of districts decide not to do it because, A, it is, it can be costly, and B, at this point in time, it does not impact, if you were to go out and borrow money for a bond or a note, it does not impact your, your ratings or your ability to do that. If we found out that that would impact you, we would certainly be in contact with you well before year end, every year, to let you know you need to do this. But it does not have any bearing on your, you know, your ability to borrow at this point. And that's the biggest area that we've heard could happen.
Thank you.
So hypothetically, Cheryl, if the school board was considering a bond for a new school, before we might go through the process of procuring that bond, we might want to think about whether the actuarial study might actually be a benefit at that point in time?
Right. Right.
But absent that?
Exactly. Or you could even contact, say, if you were thinking of going through the bond bank or one of the banks, you could, you know, make the inquiry, is this going to affect our ability?
And maybe if I could try to give a simplistic explanation, and you can clarify with more detail and specificity. But what this is talking about is teachers in New Hampshire or administrators who retire from a school district are allowed to purchase health insurance through the school district. This is a state law. And there's a cost associated with that because arguably, that changes our risk pool. And that's what this study would do, is it would go in, it would look at how many people are in that sort of retirement category and what their collective risk pool would be. So historically, we have not thought that that was worth the 10-plus thousand dollars to study that. But that's what this is. This is, I don't want anyone to think it's more complicated than that. That's what it is.
Right.
That's what the actuarial study.
Yes, that's, that's true. And it does, it factors in, you know, inactive employees, active employees, retirees, anyone that still has a skin in the game, if you will, or are affected by, that are still receiving health benefits.
At their cost.
At their cost.
So just to be clear, we're not paying for health insurance for retired people, but they're allowed to purchase through our plan, assuming 100% of the cost. That's what this would say.
And because they are part of your plan, that actuary, what the actuary will also do is, depending on how many of those inactive retirees or the ages of your teachers, administrators, that, those, all those factors impact the premium that the district pays, which then affects the, this portion of the liability and deferred inflow and outflow that has not yet been reported.
Scott, go ahead.
Oh, it's okay. For one, I wanted to at least acknowledge all of Laura's, you know, hard work on the audit. She is our point person for the districts, not only Goffstown, but the SAU and New Boston. And the results of our, of our audit are largely attributed to, you know, to Laura and her attentiveness. This year, Laura was assisted by Heather and Jerelyn to some extent, and Pamela in doing it. But I can't emphasize enough how valuable of a resource Laura is. When the audit was done, I had a conversation with Cheryl about the unassigned fund balance and that it was pretty large simply due to COVID. And at that time, you had mentioned two things. You said, strongly consider a 5% contingency fund. And I wanted to let you know that it's on our ballot this year. So the board, the board did proceed in that vein. And we're going to talk a little bit later about a health trust refund, which is rather significant. And, you know, you had mentioned last year, we need to be very mindful of this, look at capital projects. Having a very, very large fund balance from year to year is, is, is a good thing, but it can also be very, can be problematic. So I wanted to let you know that we took your advice on all of those things. And also, there were, what I liked this year is that we did get another set of eyes. So even though it's Plodzik and Sanderson, because it was Sherry, Sherry's approach and what she looked at was different than the past years, which I really liked. For me, it was refreshing. So, and I would hope that, I'm not saying every year, but at least every few years, we would get a different lead because it uncovers some things that, you know, we can, we can focus in on. And I also wanted to share with you and give you feedback that when we see things from, from your firm to say, hey, you should take a look at your conflict of interest policy, et cetera, the board, through our policy committee, you know, is, you know, is doing that. The board, you, there has been a recommendation in the governance letters over the years, hey, you're performing arts, you really need to fix that. Well, this board is, has worked aggressively, you know, towards that. So I wanted to say that I don't look at, at an audit as a bad thing. I look at it as an opportunity to really refine what the processes, you know, that we're doing. And I look at it as more of a partnership, not necessarily policing. And in that respect, I think we're better, you know, for everything that you guys have found and that what we've been able to address and will continue to address is, as you know, every year, there's other things and changes in accounting, you know, whether it be GASP, et cetera, that, that impact what we do. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the fact that you all do, you know, you take everything to heart, you're focused on getting it corrected. I can't tell you how many places I do go, and year after year, we have the same findings. And it's just, they're like, it is what it is. And actually, if it's serious enough, we actually have to step back as the auditors if we feel that a board isn't taking it serious and we, if we think the matters are serious enough, that could cause misappropriation, we will step out as auditors. And we recently did do that. So it's, it really is refreshing to me that you do take this so seriously. So I appreciate that.
And we need to, and we should, and it's our responsibility to do so. But I would say, I still like to police it. So I appreciate how detailed, how comprehensive your assessment has been of the district, given the historical past financial struggles that we had. I still appreciate the fact that you could pick up the phone and call me and say, Brian, there's something you really need to take a look at here. I like having a bigger firm. I like the fact that you could rotate the leads as opposed to having hypothetically, say, maybe a single practitioner that maybe wouldn't point things out year to year historically. So, you know, this really has been a good relationship, and keep the policing up. I think it's important.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions more for Cheryl? Ellen, go ahead.
Yeah, just, maybe you answered this, and I didn't catch it. When it comes to the adverse opinion on government activities, is the district looking into creating those records on long-term costs in retirement and healthcare? Is that something, so we get rid of that and have that information available? Or it's something we're not concerned about?
I could say that this topic of conversation has come up in prior years. And school, the school boards of prior, of the three prior years that I've been here, have decided that it was not worth the expense, time, and effort to, to go forward with it. And I think the superintendent summarized it by saying that, should we proceed with a bond at a certain point, it might be something that the board wishes to consider going forward. But as of now, much like other communities, there may not be that cost benefit to go forward. But ultimately, it's the board's decision whether, whether or not you want to expend, you know, $5,000, $10,000 plus for that actuarial study.
Oh, and this is something the actuarial study could go into and set up for us?
You would need, in order to remove that necessarily and have it as an unmodified opinion, we would need to do that study every two to three years at a cost of about $10,000 plus.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, it would require a lot of time. It would be labor-intensive for the, basically between human resources and the accounting department to gather the information that is required to put the numbers together. Based on discussions with other districts that have done it or initiated it, they just say, wow. It is labor-intensive on, for your, on your end to get that information to the actuary.
Dan, go ahead.
The impact of actually, or the results of the study have very little impact, presumably, because there are two follow-up questions. One, how many, I don't think we have very many individuals actually taking it. And this is a wild eye. What would happen if everyone who is eligible would take it, or maybe not take it, or how many did take it? That would be the question one. The question two is for Cheryl. Of all of these school districts that you do audit, how many have actually gone ahead and done this study?
My question, I would say 50%. And we, between towns and schools, we audit approximately 210 entities every year, and I would say 50, 45 to 50% have done that.
And they, they were probably, could you say that those particular jurisdictions would have a lot of individuals taking advantage of the program or not?
It varied. There, some entities had maybe, you know, there were, it could be a small town, for example. And then you've got some of the larger ones, for example, the city, the Manchester School Department, and there's a lot of activity there. They actually have New Hampshire Retirement and a City Retirement Plan. So it runs the gamut from a small entity that has few, that take advantage, and then you've got the, like, Manchester School Department that has a lot of people involved.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
So the financial advantage for us to do this would simply be that you would no longer be required to write what you wrote? Is that correct?
Correct. We would no longer report an adverse opinion if you were to go through with that. The district, providing everything else was good going forward, your financials were fairly stated for all opinion units, that adverse would go away, and then you would receive an unmodified for the district as a whole.
So we could say the AICPA, while I'm not going to say they're in cahoots with that, but the impact to Goffstown, I'm not sure if the taxpayers should be funding an actuarial to just get a paragraph out from an audit because it really doesn't play a significant role, or doesn't appear to play a significant role in Goffstown. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else, questions for Cheryl before she leaves? I see none.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. You guys?
Yeah, Laura's going too.
You're more than welcome to stay. You don't have to.
I am going to stay until Scott's financial presentation is done, and then I will take Brian up on that.
All right, thank you, Laura. All right, so the next one, presentation we have, Mrs. Berry and Mr. Lyle. Kyle, Mr. Hamel.
So Mr. Hamel, we'll welcome Mr. Hamel, who is the curriculum coordinator from Mountain View. And I think everyone will remember with great fondness and affection, Mrs. Berry. This will be her last presentation before the Goffstown School Board.
Good evening. Okay. We're going to project right behind you there. Well, since Brian already introduced the two of us, we'll get down to it. This evening, we will be presenting to you Goffstown School District's Student Achievement. We will be talking about the SAS system, SATs, both of those large-scale administrations were deployed last spring. And we will also talk about NWEA assessments that were deployed in the fall of this year. Next slide, please. I wanted to start with just a little bit of an anecdotal story. When we look at data on kids, we look not only at quantitative data, but we also look at qualitative data. And our grandchildren were visiting, and they were playing down the basement, they're nine and six, and they were building an animal hotel. And they had spaces with rooms for all of these animals, and they were going to put each one of them into rooms, they were going away on vacation. And the boys had their masks on. Animals did not require masks because it's too hard to fit a mask to every single animal. However, they vaccinated every single animal and gave every animal a vaccination card in order for them to be able to go into the hotel. And I was struck by this as part of their play, that this is what they're thinking about. And I spoke with Kathy Stoyl and Suzanne and a couple of the other principals, and I said, are you guys seeing this in what the kids are doing? And absolutely, they are. So as we sit here today and we talk about specific quantitative data points, I also just want to let you know that always in the background right now, in those little minds, they're thinking about COVID and what's going on and the impact that it has in their lives. So best practice, when we look at assessments, includes minimally the triangulation of multiple data points. We are going to give you two mostly this evening. However, data needs to be both quantitative and qualitative. Data has been analyzed on both the macro and the micro level. Tonight, we're going to present to you the macro data against the state. What you do need to know is using I, the I platform from the New Hampshire Department of Ed, I Report. We have indeed created what the superintendent and I like to lovingly call lab reports for each school. That includes grade-level data broken down into students on IEPs. And they can also go in and get their SEL students and other students as well. Your principals and the teams have analyzed the data at that level and have given us some feedback on what their next steps will be, which we will share with you when we get to the end of this presentation. So this is from the New Hampshire DOE. They put out a press release on December 14th, and that really has been the spring board that Lyle and I use to progress through the presentation of this data to you. And nationwide, assessment results from the spring of '21 have underscored the many challenges facing educators and students throughout the global pandemic, and New Hampshire's individual test scores were also impacted by the disruptions. We're not surprised by that. Dr. Chisholm and the team sat here last spring in front of you with some predictions based on what we saw with nationwide, worldwide data where the pandemic was taking us on this. Lyle?
Thank you. For the 2020-2021 school year, the Goffstown School District was able to offer in-person learning for all students throughout the entirety of the year, while some students and families decided to remain fully remote. And we were able to provide these students the option to come into the building to take the assessments in the spring. As the press release states, participation rates dropped significantly statewide. However, our comparatively higher participation rates, which you'll see on the following slides, are reflective of the district's commitment to have kids in school, which, as the press release states, is where students have fared best. We started off the year with the hybrid model. We then were able to offer those students who needed it the most priority return, culminating with the full reintegration of students in buildings in the spring of 2021. This slide shows overall participation rates across all grade levels for the spring 2021 New Hampshire SAS, for the ELA, math, and science assessments, for the state in green on the left of each paragraph, and for the Goffstown School District in gold on the right side for each paragraph. This labeling pattern continues throughout the presentation. Due to test security compliance measures, there was no option for remote administration. All students had to be present in the building to take the test. And these participation rates include those students who did come into the buildings in order to participate in the assessment. This graph displays our elementary participation rate for the spring 2021 New Hampshire SAS, broken out by grade level three and four, for ELA and math, again, compared to the state These graphs show the participation rates broken out by grade level for the New Hampshire SAS spring 2021 for grades five through eight. While the ELA and math tests are taken in all grades three through eight, the science assessment is only administered in grades five, eight, and as you'll see on the next slide, grade 11. This slide shows the participation rate for the 2021 SAT comprised of the ELA and math assessments taken by our grade 11 students at Goffstown High School. I've also included the grade 11 New Hampshire SAS science participation rate on the slide as well.
One of the things that I'd like to mention specific to the participation rates, beginning in September of every year, there is a core assessment team that begins to meet. in September of every year, there is a core assessment team that begins to meet, and there is a school coordinator in each building. And they take on the responsibilities of deploying these large-scale assessments and also making sure that we meet with all the compliance requirements. And really between administration, school coordinators, and the teams of teachers and everyone working together, that's how we got those impressive participation rates that we did get. Kids showed up. Makes a difference. So the impact to math scores was noticeably larger than it was for ELA scores. That doesn't come to a surprise. As Dr. Chisholm spoke to us last spring, you know, how are our kids doing, and how do we know this was anticipated? So, Lyle, if I can have the next slide. What we'd like you to see here is this shows assessment proficiency over time. We can't talk to you about growth, because if you look at 2020, no test was given. If we look at the table on the left, ELA proficiency, the district from 2019 to 21, we held, just as the state of New Hampshire did, pretty tight with English Language Arts. When we go down, we take a look at mathematics, our scores did go down, as did the state. State went down 10 percentage points. We went down a little bit more, but we still remain higher than the state relative to performance. And take a look at science. We actually went up, which is a good thing. 2021 assessment proficiency, this is a horizontal bar graph, and it just benchmarks, once again, it gives you another visual. On the left in green is the state of New Hampshire, and the district's performance is on, it's blue, it's over on the right.
What follows next, our slides that will show the New Hampshire SAS state average in Goffstown Student Achievement by grade level. For each achievement slide, we've calibrated the vertical Y-axis to be running from 0 to 80% so that the scale remains the same throughout the presentation. This slide represents overall statewide, green, and district-wide, gold, New Hampshire SAS achievement in English Language Arts by grade level from the spring of 2021. SAS assessments are all scored on a 1 to 4 scale. Level 1 is considered below proficient, level 2, approaching proficient, level 3, proficient, and level 4, highly proficient. For both the New Hampshire State and Goffstown data, the percentage of students marked as proficient is comprised of student scores at a level 3 or a level 4. This slide shows the state average and district-wide achievement data for the spring 2021 SAS Assessment in Math. And on this slide, we see again the New Hampshire State and Goffstown Achievement Data for the spring 2021 SAS Science Assessment, which again is taken in grades 5, 8, and 11.
And I think if you noticed as we ticked through those, with the exception of grade 3 in mathematics, we were above the state in all areas.
For Goffstown High School, in addition to the New Hampshire SAS Science Assessment, the SAT is a state-level assessment used for accountability for ELA and math. Multi-year achievement comparisons between the state and the district are what follow next. This slide shows statewide and Goffstown achievement levels for the SAT Evidence-Based Reading and Writing Assessment over time as percentages of students who attain the benchmark for proficiency. This represents achievement data from the past four administrations. Just like for New Hampshire SAS, there was no SAT given in the spring of the 2019-2020 school year. This slide shows again the statewide and Goffstown achievement level comparisons, this time for the SAT math assessment over time. The next set of assessment data we'd like to present to you comes from our NWEA testing. The NEWA math assessments are local assessments that we give to students in ELA, in math, in the fall, in order to collect benchmark data. One note about these assessments, during the summer of 2020, NWEA updated the norms used to evaluate student achievement based on nationwide student achievement data from pre-pandemic school years. The recommendation of our data analysis consultants at NWEA was that we look at achievement levels at each grade level over multiple years, recognizing again that there is no data from the 1920 school year. The question guiding our analysis has been, at what achievement levels have our students been starting the school year? District achievement from the recent fall assessment compared to district achievement from the fall of 2018 and 2019 is presented on the following slides. Each year's achievement results are evaluated on the same 2020 pre-pandemic norms. Here, we see the district-wide achievement data in ELA for the fall 2018, 2019, and 2021 NEWA administration. NEWA reports student achievement in five quintiles, which are equivalent percentile ranges, specifically low, low average, average, high average, and high. When we look at this data, students represented by the green and blue, the highest quintiles, we consider to be equivalent to a proficiency level of 3 or 4 for New Hampshire SAS. In yellow, due to day-to-day fluctuations, variability, and the assessment standard margin of error, these students represented may or may not be projected to be proficient on New Hampshire SAS. For the red and orange, the lowest of the quintiles, these are the students that we are focusing our efforts on, and as you'll see in the building level slides coming up. This slide shows the district-level achievement quintiles for NWEA in math, again with our fall 2021 assessments compared to our own fall of 18 and 19. Just like the last slide, all three academic years are evaluated based on the 2020 norms.
So I think when we look back over NWEA, what we see when we spoke with the consultant at NWEA, and we said, okay, so we've given the test this year, but we're using pre-pandemic norms. What is, what do we do with that information, right? And it was her recommendation that we go back to 18, 19, and 1920, and do some comparisons to see how far off we were. That is not a growth norm, because we've got a break in there for that one year. So these are achievement data, a point in time, is what we were looking at. And clearly, we've had a little bit of regression as we look at that. But I think the other thing we need to consider when we look at that data is this test was given in the fall. Remember that, after kids are coming back in. New Hampshire SAS was given in the spring. So this, the kids come back roughly the end of September, beginning of October, is when we deployed this particular assessment. So I think that has to be taken into consideration as well.
Can we ask questions or wait till the end?
Sure. Can she ask a question now? You want her, you want to finish?
Sure.
Just on page 10, when I look at the three years that we look at, for ELA, the proficient and above proficient, 61%, 61%, and this past year, 52% were proficient or above. And for math, it went 64%, 64%, down to 47% proficient or above.
Where are you, Ellen? I'm sorry.
Page 10?
My page 10 doesn't match you.
Oh, it's, I think it was the last two charts you had up.
Oh, NWEA. Yes. Yes.
I mean, not that it surprised me anything, but those are huge drops. And I understand it's two-years comparison, okay, I understand that. But that is huge, 64 to 47%.
The other thing that's in there, Ellen, is we have second graders in there, and it was the first time that we had tested them.
In which test?
In both, for both the math and the English Language Arts. So they are aggregated.
For 2021?
Yes. Yes. They are aggregated in there as well. So this is grades 2 through 8.
Okay. Would that account for such steep decline?
It's a good question.
Okay.
It's a fair question.
Because I figured yellow's probably sort of around average, and then you go up from there, sort of. And even those are, for ELA, it's 81%, 78%, 74%. And math went from 81% to 83% down to 70%. And that, I think that's just indicative of, I don't think anybody's surprised, but I think this is going to be longstanding. These, I mean, you just don't make this up overnight. And I know we've done a lot, but I think it's something we and the parents, the district, the town somehow need to be made aware of, that our kids are struggling to get them, to get up there. And we're doing everything we can to do that. And we are doing a lot in this district for these kids. The pandemic's not over.
Thank you for that, Ellen. You're exactly right. We are, but you're also, you're also not wrong. There are some impacts of this that are generic, and it's not okay to say that, because these are our kids. So the fact that they are experiencing this same deficit in mathematics as everybody else is, that can't be the period at the end of the sentence.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes. And that is exactly where your administrators, your teachers, your community, that's where we all are relative to our concern with this. And what are the next steps?
Yeah, just as an anecdote, and you may have all been seeing it too, I have seen the stress of the pandemic impact elementary school children, who, for instance, if they have the runny nose, "I can't go to school. I can't, I can't go." They'll send me home. They'll send me out of the class. They'll think, even though she just tested negative. I mean, the anxiety is there in all these children, and it's going to take time for them to, and all the adults too.
So when we talk about triangulating data on kids, those are the other things. Those are the things that you don't put in a report card.
Right.
You know, I think the other thing too, though, that I want to underscore is, last year, at the end of the year, we worked with administrators to develop narratives for report cards, because there was so much growth that was not able to fit in the box. The relationships that teachers and parents developed, the work that parents did, the fact that they sat with their kids, that they were, they partnered, all of those things, the growth in technology ability of our kids and of our staff and of our parents, all of those things matter. So when we look at the whole student, we can't disregard that. So Ellen, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to light. But again, just, just because we're what it was predicted to be, that's not the end of the sentence.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And that was one of the reasons why, as we look at this slide, we provided the disaggregated data to the schools. So one of the things that you've heard about before are the LEAP goals that every school develops, which are the annual goals, Local Education Improvement Plan goals. These plans are, in addition to that, and in some cases now, in place of that. So each school was given more in-depth student achievement data, grade level data, content, ELA and math, all students, IEP students, and then all others. We also looked at individual student scores. It is in Power School. Any teacher can pull up their student, and they can pull up the NWEA scores, the SAS scores, and find out what they mean. So there's a great deal of data available.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
In your opinion, or from what you're knowing of our entire teaching staff, are all of our teachers, I'm using the word all, but huge numbers, if not all, actually doing, using this data? Because I always found it to be invaluable to guide instruction, but I also know a lot of teachers who just wouldn't go in there and use it. Are our teachers using this data?
Yes. Absolutely. They are. They meet in teams. They meet through, whether it's MTSS, and you'll see a little bit more about that, whether it's looking at a student who has an IEP, whether it's looking at a Title I student, whether it's looking at a struggling student, behavioral data.
This data is used.
It is. It is. Lyle, you look like you had something to add to that.
Yeah, I was just going to add, specifically for Mountain View, I, at the end of the school year, I'm able to run reports on the grade level to see where there's common areas of strength and weakness, and then I provide those to our teachers for their summer professional development days. So they can use that to see what's working, what needs to be revamped. So I do know that it is being used.
Good. Thank you, Greg. Thank you for telling us that.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
So let's go on to Maple Avenue.
Yep.
So what you will see, the NWEA achievement data information that you'll see is going to be common for both Maple Avenue, Bartlett, and for Mountain View. Maple Avenue and Bartlett principals met, their special ed facilitators met to look at what was common in their data. We know that having a similar response in both schools matters. We know that has been a request in a directive of the board. We also understand that where they need to be different, that they will be different. So for short term, you can see the use of multiple data points. Again, additional triangulation of the data, provide special education or MTSS services in reading with targeted interventions, five days a week. I do want to just reference briefly, most of our core programs, in fact, all of them are developed to be delivered five days a week. Think about a hybrid year when you've got young learners, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, who are not being delivered instruction five, five days a week, or who do not get the Tier 2 intervention, five days a week. So they're well aware of this, and they're working in the classrooms to support this. Teacher support for in-class, small group literacy, IXL. IXL is going, I think, to turn out to be a huge support across the board. You'll see it mentioned at every level. Long-term training for special education, intervention personnel, scientifically-based proven intervention programs, OJ and Wilson, working to retain personnel after they're trained, and professional development for classroom teachers. Short-term, continued differentiation, again, IXL, PD for our teachers. Meeting the needs of learners who scored high average or high, again, continued differentiation and IXL. New this year for Maple Avenue was an interventionist who went in and are actually providing some in-class support with classroom teachers to work with smaller groups. Next slide, please, Lyle. Bartlett Elementary, you will see that it mirrors in content the applications that are being deployed at Maple Avenue Elementary School. And the last slide, last two slides, Lyle, you want to wrap this up?
Absolutely. For Mountain View Middle School, as we saw in the preceding slides, the NWEA achievement level is lower, as we recognized in prior years. This data does follow the national and state trend that was reported to the board by Dr. Chisholm in the spring. ELA experienced a slight decrease, while math did have a larger impact. Again, as we stated, this is achievement data, not growth data, because we don't have the consecutive years needed for growth. For our students who scored low on NWEA or below proficient on SAS, in the short term, we continue to collect multiple data points to identify the specific needs of each student. We have multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS, processes in place for students both with academic, MTSSA, and behavioral, MTSSB needs. As you heard last month from Dr. McMurray's presentation, we have multiple after-school supports available to these students, in addition to in-class, as well as differentiation strategies. IXL Diagnostic continues to be a strong, individualized support to help personalize learning for students. In the longer term, we're looking at professional development opportunities for all of our professional staff members in math and reading instruction, and we're excited to be able to offer a close reading refresher course for our professional staff members, which will take place in March. For our students who are on level, NWEA are proficient according to SAS, our ELA and math teachers continue to offer differentiated small group instruction in order to meet students at their level. IXL, and teachers identify skills to IXL, and teachers identify skills to practice to meet these students' needs. Our after-school tutoring, as well as enrichment activities, such as Explorer Vision and the Chess Club, are available for all of our students. And any of our future professional development opportunities for teachers will also benefit all of our students. For those students who scored high on NWEA or highly proficient on SAS, teachers continue to differentiate at their level, including by using wonders options for advanced ELA learners. And we're able to offer advanced math classes in grade seven and eight for our advanced math students. IXL has a range of learning and skills to practice that run the gamut, all the way up through grade twelve English and calculus. So there are multiple opportunities for personalization for students who are at the high end of achievement. And these students also have access to all of our after-school enrichment opportunities as well. In order to create a clear assessment of students' gaps and deficits, the team here at GHS is reviewing student achievement data and participation rates from national assessments, SAT, SAS, as we saw, as well as advanced placement tests for 2021 in comparison to prior years. Data from the end of the first semester, which closed on Friday, will be reviewed in order to accurately analyze pass/failure rates and address individual student needs. Current supports and interventions during the day for GHS include members of the National Honor Society who are available in the Student Resource Center for tutoring, special education case managers who lead supported preps for students, and an interventionist who works with students in the Grizzly Den. Common planning time allows departments to meet in order to assess and address any observed learning gaps. Supports and interventions occurring outside of the school day include teacher staffed before-school and after-school homework time, a four-hour Saturday school session, which is led by two teachers, and a twice-weekly after-school SAT preparation enrichment course.
All right, go ahead, Shane.
I had two questions. Could you explain in a little more detail what a supported prep is? Is that like a support in study hall type of?
Sure. The acronym PREP stands for Personal Reflective Educational Planning Period.
Okay.
So I think it would be something that we'd recognize as a study hall.
Okay.
And what the high school is able to do is staff those small group prep sessions with a special education case manager in order to offer personalization and individualized support for them.
Awesome, thank you. And my last question is, the common planning time, how frequently does that happen?
Don't know.
They would be available every other day, and they typically meet once a week.
Okay. Thank you.
There you have it. Thank you, Brian.
Anyone else? Ellen?
Yep. Do, you know, when I ever get any kind of report about this is what we've set up, do, my, I tend to automatically think, everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing at these times. Do we know that in fact, our staff and our students are in fact discussing the kids, their gaps, how to address it? And the students taking advantage of the offerings at all grade levels to help them with their schools, with their subjects and deficit areas? How do we know that all this stuff is being used properly?
We don't?
I think that we do and we don't. I think is the honest answer.
Yeah.
I think that as much as we can know, we do. It's part of the IEP process. You have to look at data. We know that for all these kids. We know in order to qualify or be involved in Title I, we know to be involved in MTSS, that that is the case. So if you're involved in any one of those more structured service deliveries where they're looking at things, they are. But I will also tell you that our classroom teachers do meet and they are grouping kids. This is how they put kids together. This is so, even seventh, eighth grade, if you're going to put kids together in a math class, you need the data to be able to do it.
Yeah.
Do we go into every classroom and make sure that that's happening? No, but we do have a pretty robust supervision and evaluation process and a walkthrough process that our administrators deploy, deliver. And if they have concerns, I promise you, they let the superintendent know, they let me know, they let the special ed director know.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Questions for Mr. Hamel or Mrs. Berry?
Go ahead, Beth. I noticed on a couple of the slides today that you have a common theme that we've heard as people already have been, which is working to maintain personnel after training.
Mm-hmm.
This is a long-term goal. Has, has any thought been given to that? Or like how we go about that? Because I think it's a lot of things that we're.
Yeah, and I, I think that we very much would like to be able to approach that not in a pandemic. Again, I think we are generic in that regard. Can't be a period at the end of the sentence. I know that Kate McGrath certainly shares concerns about that. They work to do what they can with our new staff. We've got a lot of mentoring going on in the buildings for, we have teacher leaders within the building, as well as administration working with these folks. We also have teachers that are on Alt-4 plans, so they're going to school while teaching school. And that's a lot. You're shaking your head. You know you understand that.
I've done it.
As well. You, you've lived, you've lived that life. And, you know, Brian, we've also had conversations with this many at the table. Do you have anything to add? I mean, I know this is, this is a concern.
The most important thing for teacher retention is having fair wages. So this really speaks to the warrant article that the voters will see in March. It's a four-year teacher contract that gets teachers to about the fiftieth percentile, which is what we've been trying to do for many years. So we spend a lot of time training teachers. We spend a lot of time, effort and energy, helping cultivate the skills of our teachers. And there's nothing more frustrating than training a teacher and watching a teacher leave and go to a neighboring school district to make eight thousand dollars more. So I think that's what we're trying to fix.
Thanks, Reta. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have two mutually exclusive questions, but the first one goes off what Reta was asking. Looking at your short term for the elementary schools.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like, you know, tutoring before and after school based on staffing availability.
Mm-hmm.
How often do we have staff available to do that?
Mike McMurray presented his report. Do you remember what he said about that when he came?
Multiple days a week. And I would say, we have, we have tried to create an incredible number of opportunities. You just saw on, I don't know if it's behind you, but. We offered free after-school SAT prep class. We only have twenty-four kids participating in it. I wish that number was higher, but it's not. And if you went and wanted to take a class, you'd probably spend close to seven hundred and fifty dollars to take that class. So I think we've created a lot of opportunities that maybe as many people as we had hoped aren't taking advantage of it. But I think we would also say, I think people are fried. I think parents are fried. I think kids are fried. You know, and the idea for a kid going and doing SAT prep after school is probably a pretty daunting thing. So I think the numbers of participation are lower than I would hope, but the opportunity is available. So I've said it repeatedly, anyone in the school district who wants free tutoring, we have it available at all levels.
I guess that was my point, is the need is there, but as long as the support is also there to match the need, and it sounds like we've done that, which is great. My second question that I have, thank you. The second question that I have is about the New Hampshire SAS. And I think I heard that testing was only completed for people that came into the school system, even if they were remote.
Yeah.
If that is accurate, do we have stratified data to articulate what the scores are for those people that were fully remote that came in for that testing versus people that came back to school and conducted that test?
Can we disaggr, can we disaggregate the data that way?
Correct.
Yeah, you can, because you know who was remote.
Because I'd like to see those metrics to say, for those people that stayed home, what was the scores they had versus those that returned to school?
Who stayed home all year?
Exactly.
Okay.
Interesting. That's a good one.
Fair question.
Did you have anything else, Jared?
Oh, those were my two. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thanks. Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Ellen.
If I may follow up on something Jared said. For the programs at any grade level that we offer before-school, after-school, or additional during the school day for supports for kids, whatever the enrollment is that the students want to take advantage of those supports, do we have the staff willing and able to do it? Like if there's a.
Yes, we're not offering programs that we can't staff. So the answer to that is yes.
Okay. Does that?
That's it. Does that answer your question?
We're staffing the programs we have that we offer to the kids before and after school and that.
And we're able to staff.
And we're able to staff them.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Anyone else? Questions, comments? I don't see any.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Welcome to be for coming tonight and getting us all together. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and this is MC's last week also.
This would be the time to say goodbye to MC.
Yes.
Oh. And thank you for all you've done for us. Thank you.
All right, so we're getting into our committee reports. Finance reporter Scott, our manifest.
Sure. So I just wanted to let the board know that due to the fact that we did not have a meeting earlier in the month, there are two manifests that are before you. So the meeting that was canceled was the manifest that totals one million, two hundred, ten thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. And in that manifest, payroll, taxes and benefits comprised a little over eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. Your special ed activity was a little over eighty-two thousand dollars. And your general expenses were a little over a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Your special ed activity was kind of what you've seen historically on these manifests. There's really no big surprises there. Your, your general expenses, I wanted to let you know, you'll see Brian for your landscaping. We did purchase the materials for that irrigation project to make sure that there weren't cost increases and to make sure that they were going to be available for installation when the, when the weather gets better, late, in the late spring, summer time. And then one that you don't often see is Sabrook Environmental, and those are chemical disposals for our science labs. And we accumulated more than just a couple of years of chemicals that needed to be disposed of. So in speaking with leadership here at the high school, you'll be seeing this more on an annual basis and more like two thousand dollars a year. And then lastly, performance food service, you know, this is Megan and the food procurement. In speaking with Megan, she says that we are buying commodities for two to four weeks out. Continued challenges with getting product. So she's had to revamp menus, do a lot of substitutions. But she's another one of our unsung heroes here, that she is just like cobbling things together, staff and, and materials-wise, to make sure that her kids are fed. So are there, are there any questions on the manifest for January tenth?
No, see any? Oh, go ahead, Ellen.
Well, I'm just looking at the two that we're going to be looking at. It's probably a really easy answer, but I don't know it. Why such a huge difference in the two manifest numbers?
The biggie is your health trust and your New Hampshire retirement system, which were about one point two million dollars.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so do we want to do them together?
No, I'd rather, I think.
Rather not, okay.
I mean.
So does anybody have questions on this one?
You know what? You could, if you want to.
We can.
Because, because, yeah, roll call vote. So the second manifest is January twenty-fourth, and that's three million, nineteen thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Your payroll, taxes and benefits are over two point one million dollars, of which you can see we had your health trust payments with this, which is for health and dental, as well as your New Hampshire retirement contributions. Special ed activity was rather robust in that manifest, a little over two hundred and sixty-two thousand. And here I wanted to point out to you that we do pay certain tuitions on our out-of-district placements on a semester basis, not just on, and some vendors charge us per semester. Some of them bill us in arrears, some of them bill us proactively, some of them bill us by month. But that's why you see Bedford School District and Regional Services, those are semester-type tuitions. And then, as I've mentioned in many prior meetings, we are, we outsource, or we're using vendors on so many of our services. The one that is also, want to make mention, is Safe Wheels LLC. That's the one for six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. They are a special ed transportation vendor. We're going to be talking about regular ed transportation later on in the meeting, but we have challenges in special ed transportation as well due to driver shortages. And we have, we are using another vendor, Safe Wheels, to do, I believe this is one, perhaps two, out-of-district placement runs. So that's what that is. The vast majority of our special ed transportation, both in-district and out-district, out-of-district is still Durham. But we have looked, because of, they've not been able to satisfy all of our needs, we've had to go elsewhere. That, too, is a big challenge. General expenses total a little over four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Your SAU assessment for January, Gofftown Truck Center is your regular ed transportation. That also includes kindergarten, athletic transportation as well. Manchester School, just School District is your, was an MST cost, a supplemental MST cost. And then a couple of other ones that you might be curious about. More in contracting, we had an insurance claim whereby a truck backed up into the loading dock, just damaging some of the facade, et cetera. So with that, even though it was an insurance claim, we have a deductible, there were parts of the repairs that were not insurance-related. So we had to change the grade of where they back up so that it wouldn't, you know, you don't have a situation with the angle as such. And we also are proactively putting a bumper system around it, so that wasn't part of it. So that's, you know, what that is all about. And that bumper system should be installed in the next month. So that's another one of the unusual ones. And I think that's it for my explanations. Again, any questions on that one?
Any questions on this manifest?
I'll move to approve the manifest of January tenth, 2022, and January twenty-fourth, 2022.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? OJ? Any further discussion before I do a roll call? All right, Janice, Reta?
Yes.
Ginny? Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle? Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, Scott?
All right. So the next item on your agenda is to review the warrant, but most importantly, there needs to be a vote taken on whether or not you are going to recommend or not recommend that particular warrant article. And then additionally, as we prepare for the deliberative session, we might want to also determine who will make the motion to place it on the warrant, who will second it, and then who would be the person to restrict, a motion to restrict reconsideration. So with that, I will start with the draft warrant, which hopefully you all have in front of you. Jared will report out a little bit later in terms of what the Budget Committee did, but you're going to see on this warrant what their votes were. And Jared, before I get even started, do you want to add anything as the Budget Committee rep in terms of how the Budget Committee voted on anything?
If we want to go through each individual article, for people that weren't there, we definitely can do that.
Okay. I just, I just wasn't sure if you wanted to add anything. So the operating budget, which is the, the good news is that the Budget Committee and presumably the school board with your, your, how you vote tonight, had the same number, which is a pleasant, good thing. So with that, you'd be looking at a proposed or a budget of forty-eight million, eight hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, with a default budget of forty-eight million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. That, with that, the Budget Committee voted 11 to 1 to recommend, and then this board would also have to put forward there how they want to proceed in terms of recommending.
Do we do that now?
Yes, you would make a motion.
A move that we, the school board, approve? Is that the word I want?
Vote to recommend.
Vote to recommend.
Vote to recommend, Article 2.
All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. Any further discussion before I do roll call? Seeonan, Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that is all of us.
Nine zero.
If anybody wanted to know, Ms. Chair, the one person that voted no on that from the Budget Committee, I think was just because they offered an amendment to remove the water from the Maple School, which we had talked about during the Budget Committee. But I think that they were just upset that it wasn't removed.
Right, the 2,000 dollars.
2,000 dollars.
So I'm going to come back to the who will make the motions after I go through it, yeah.
You want to make the restrictions first for everything, okay.
So Article 3 is the Teacher Collective Barney Agreement, the CBA. And with that, this is a four-year contract with a first-year cost of 1,106,112 dollars, and listed on the warrant is the other subsequent years. There is 37,312 dollars coming from the special revenue fund, which means it won't be coming from taxation. So in that first-year cost, you're looking at 1,68,800 dollars. That'll be raised for, raised by taxation for the purpose of funding that article. In this case, the Budget Committee voted 11 for, 0 against, with 1 abstention.
Heather?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Please let the record show, Dan is recusing himself, therefore, please do not call on me.
Yes.
And my number should not appear on here at all.
Perfect, thank you, Dan. Jared, go ahead.
Just a note from the Budget Committee on this one. The person that did vote to abstain did so because they were asking questions that I think we're all aware of. They were looking at, with the increase in teacher's salary or the increase in the money we put in, what is the tangible increase or decrease of our students? We don't really have a good correlation or coefficient to say this input's really driving that output from our money versus how teachers or students do on their tests. So that's why they abstained from it. Just want to bring it to the board that that might be a common theme that we're seeing going forward, and if we choose to kind of, you know, address that in a way. So that was just the one abstention we had.
Right, and if I could add, so that, that particular member asked questions at the presentation about the board's focus on teachers with master's degrees. And his specific question was, does, you know, do teachers with master's degrees translate? So it's a roundabout way of what Jared's saying, like, how do you know if by paying a teacher more to have a master's will translate into academic, you know-
Student success.
Student success, so, and that was that. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Alan.
I guess the answer is, historically, and even just tonight, in what we saw, our students perform better than this rest of the, the average of the state. And that is consistent, and that's, even with us struggling to be able to retain good teachers after we train them. So I think our, our staff is, should be commended for what they do, for what they get. They know they're underpaid based on state averages. So I think the answer to that is, our teachers are doing very well and performing for us, and this test results show that. That would be my answer.
Right, thank you, Alan. Ginny?
I think another part of that is, I know, I just got, not selling my house, but I, I guess the realtors just really think I should.
You've been there long enough, Ginny.
Well, yeah, I know. I keep getting these things from realtors that tell me how much my house is worth and blah, 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 and they all remark about our schools being excellent. And I think if our schools are excellent, I think one part of that is, is because our teachers have gone forth and gotten extra education that they bring back to our classrooms. And we're not just getting first-year teachers, that we get experienced teachers that know how to teach and know how to work with all sorts of children, but also that are lifelong learners and that they, they move on and they get their master's degrees and other degrees, so that they're always learning how to be better teachers. And I think those degrees are very helpful in our classrooms, because all of that learning comes back to benefit our students. So I think, I really think it is an important thing, and it's beneficial. We want lifelong learners, just like we want to teach our students to be lifelong learners. They get that role model from, from our teachers, I think, in most situations.
I would agree with that. This evening tonight, when you see the staffing sheet and you see how many notifications of track changes that we have, this is indicative of our teachers taking advantage of things like the onsite master's program that we brought in, that allows teachers to get their master's degree in a uniquely tailored program specific for SAU 19. And by the way, at a fraction of the cost if they went and took the classes on campus themselves. So we absolutely believe that teacher training results in higher student achievement. There is no question about that, and the better prepared our teachers are, the better our kids benefit.
Go ahead, Alan.
Just a real-life factual piece of information, talk about lifelong learner. I did all my college AC after children. So I was over 50 when I went and got, and I've gotten well beyond a master's degree. And every course I ever took as a teacher improved what I was able to do and informed what I was able to do with every child I taught. And that just made me a better teacher and made them far more successful in class. So that additional education, I can't recommend it enough to anybody in education, especially as you go through your career, because you learn things at the beginning, but there's always more to be learned. And I found it to be absolutely effective and very helpful to me as the teacher.
Thank you, Alan. All right, so are we ready? Did you have-
I'd also say just, the teachers, we know that we're very lucky as students to have the teachers we have. Our friends in other districts, from what we know of the teachers in other districts, we know that we have some of the best in our area, and they do, they go above and beyond with everything. They give individualized attention as much as they can, even in classes of 18, 20 kids. They, I mean, they treat us like people more than, more than just students, like they treat us like friends. And they are just, they've had a great impact on all of us, and so we, they put in so much work that I think this is, it's not, oh, they're getting more money, what outputs what we see. I think it's, we're actually paying a fair wage for the sheer amount of work that they're doing. They, creating Google Classrooms, all the work they've done, this is pandemic. I think it's just showcased how much they've done. And I think if the Budget Committee wants to see outcomes, they should talk to the students. Because also, we've had teachers that we've loved leave in the last few years for districts where they pay more, simply because it was a better fit for them or they had, they needed the money, or, you know, they had a growing family. I think, and it's hard, like, losing the AP Chem teacher two years in a row, because other districts were just a better, more advantageous for them. And I think it shows if you talk to the students.
All right, thank you so much, Kayla. Appreciate that. All right, so we need to make a motion to recommend Article 3.
Sub moved.
By Ellen, do we have a second? By Ginny? Any further discussion? None, I'll do Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Eight zero.
Yep.
Article, Article 4 is your renewal of your area agreement. This is a 10-year area agreement with the New Boston School District. And really just need the board's recommendation. This is not something that the Budget Committee weighs in on. This is exclusively a school board vote to recommend.
Move to recommend Article 4?
Right, Ellen, do we have a second? By Terry? I'll do roll call. Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle? Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that's nine zero.
That'd be a nine zero to recommend. Article 5 is your facilities capital reserve fund deposit of 200,000 dollars. Said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance as of June 30th, 2022. Again, no amount to be raised by taxation, majority vote required. I do want, for disclosure purposes, that the impact of this article is approximately 11 cents on the tax rate, meaning that if voters, if they were to disapprove of this, the tax rate would be lowered by approximately 11 cents.
But it doesn't raise it from what it's-
It does not raise it, but it could be lowered.
Thank you, Scott. So do I have a question?
Right, and the Budget Committee, by the way, voted nine three to recommend.
Move to recommend Article 5?
Five, yep. I have a motion by Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane? Any discussion before I do roll call? All right, Seeonan, Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Ginny.
Yes.
Jared?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle? Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Sorry, I forgot to say my vote.
So that's eight one to recommend. And lastly, Article number six, which is the 5% contingency fund per New Hampshire RSA 198:4-B, Roman numeral 2. The district currently has a 2.5% contingency fund. The statute changed allowing for school districts to go forward with a, up to, up to a 5% contingency fund. We have discussed this prior, and once again, because it does not have an appropriation attached to it, only the school board votes to recommend.
Move to recommend Article 6?
All right, so I have a motion by Ellen, do I have a second? By Reta? Any discussion before I do roll call? Seeonan, Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yeah, Jenny.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that's-
Nine zero. All right.
So go back to the beginning.
So now going back to the operating, just all of these warrant articles. So I wanted to put forward the same offer that I know that the superintendent and myself made to the New Boston School District, that your administrative team is ready, willing, and able to present at the deliberative session these articles. That said, I feel very comfortable working with the Budget Committee rep, Jared Talb, which is school board rep, Jared Talbot, on the operating budget. I think Jared and I know it fairly well. I would think that it would make sense for us to work collaboratively, you know, on that. I think it's very good to have the face of the school board doing this. But then again, I could also work with Jared in terms of any questions that might pop up or just specific slides, so.
Jared, are you good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so you and Jared will collaborate.
We'll present, we'll present that one. And then, for the purposes of putting it onto the warrant, I would assume that it would be Jared as the, as the school board rep-
To make the motion.
To make the motion. And then, I don't know who wants to second it.
Who would like to second Jared's motion on this?
Ellen.
All right, so Ellen, you'll say I second during the time.
And then the motion to limit reconsideration, that would, how about that would always be the person who's making the motion? That'd be Jared then?
All right, so then Jared will limit.
Okay.
And that's what the motion says? I move to limit reconsideration?
Yeah, we'll have a script. There'll be a script.
To restrict.
To restrict it.
Jared's going to say that, right?
Okay, reconsideration.
You're just going to say second?
Okay.
To Jared's motion to-
I don't mind doing it for all the articles if we want. I think I did it last year, so that's absolutely fine.
The second, Article number three is your Teacher Collective Bargaining Agreement, and Mrs. McGrath has offered to present that on behalf of the district, if that's okay?
Yeah, if that works.
So it would just be a matter now of who wants to make the motion and second.
All right, who wants to motion?
It should be the people who negotiate.
Who negotiated it?
Who was on negotiations?
Who was on, Jared, me, and Janelle?
Yep.
So-
You want to motion, I'll second for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Better be there, Jared. Heather, second.
Sorry.
Do you want me to motion?
I don't think as chair you're allowed to motion.
I didn't think so. So I'll second.
Actually, this is not a school board meeting. It's a town meeting.
Yeah.
So she can, if she needs to.
I'll second for you. All right, so then we also need someone.
That's Jared, because he's making the-
I'll just do the restriction, reconsideration.
Okay. Area agreement, I would be more than happy to present the area agreement to the, at the deliberative. And again, who would like to, just need to know. Ginny.
So that's Ginny will motion, and who will second? I was on that too. Reta, you want to second?
I wasn't on it.
You weren't on it?
Who was on it?
I was. I can second. And Dan? Dan was on it.
Yeah, but, yeah, it should be someone who's sitting there.
Yeah, I'll second, that's fine. And then Jared, do you want to-
Yep.
Limit the restrictions?
I got it, I got it for all of them if you want.
Yep.
That's fine.
And then the facilities capital reserve fund, again, I'd be more than willing to speak to that one.
Okay. And we need someone to motion for that?
I'll move it.
By Ellen? And then second that.
Shane, do you want to get to the town report?
All right, Reta's going to second, and then Jared's going to-
One more try. You and Terry have one more try to get into the town report.
I'll do it, it doesn't bother me.
All right, Article 6.
And then the contingency fund, again, I have that in terms of the presentation.
All right, so Scott, you're going to speak to that?
Shane, you said, right?
Shane's going to move it.
I'll motion.
Shane's going to move it?
Shane and Terry?
And then Terry's second?
There we go.
Now you're in the town report.
You okay, Terry?
All you do is say I second, and then Jared's going to do the restrictions.
Does that mean I'm seconding the restriction all the way through?
No.
No, it's just once, that's it.
Oh, you don't have to second it, keep doing it.
Could I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
Could we, on the flyer that we put out to voters, could we just make sure that Article 4 and Article 6 have a note as to why the Budget Committee does not listed as a recommendation on those to the voters, so that they know that why there's not a recommendation from the-
Yep.
Why no?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good idea, Jenny.
It looks funny having all of the other ones.
People wouldn't understand why that is.
No.
Good point.
Who's presenting the area agreement?
Reta's got a question.
May I ask? Actually, I failed to mention this during the connotation, but it was during the budget hearing, it was really, we were speaking here, the teachers, they did such amazing stuff with this.
Thank you. Yeah, that's true.
If I may, that was one, if not the only time in all these years attending those things, that I heard teachers who reside here, because many of our teachers are neighbors, stand up and speak on behalf of their contract, and I thought, I was very pleased to see that, and I thought they did a very good job.
They did a great job. It was definitely a great job.
Yeah.
They spoke well, but they spoke very strongly about what they did and why they deserved.
Right.
And why they deserved it.
Right, which, which was nice.
Was awesome.
And they also made it both good things.
And it made physical sense, because it was very important to some people.
So Scott, do you have everything that you see?
I do. So my question for everybody here is that I have got two options. I can either go back to the SAU and I have to import, I have to update the portal in the New Hampshire system, and then come back and you can manually sign it. Or if you promise, I could do it also via PandaDoc.
Okay.
As long as everybody does it by-
Right.
By tomorrow.
I need it Wednesday, would be the latest, because Denise has to post this.
You're right.
And that's why, it's part of our posting.
So come to us an email tomorrow and we sign it and send it back.
So check tomorrow for emails and sign it. And sign it.
Okay. Promise, you'll get it. And Dan and Janelle, that'll be good, because this way you can also sign off on it as well.
Right.
Copy that.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Was there a time confirmed for the deliberative session?
Seven o'clock.
Seven, okay.
Seven on the seventh.
On the seventh, at Mountain View Middle School. So that's just for the, yes.
It's not here?
It is, I'm glad I said that, right?
Say it again, Scott.
The deliberative session, okay, repeat after me, the deliberative session is Monday, February 7th, at seven o'clock, at Mountain View Middle School Gym.
Really?
Yes. The reason why is it at Mountain View as opposed to the high school is for two reasons. First and foremost, both our boys and girls basketball teams are enjoying a very good season, and there is a very strong likelihood that one or both of the teams will host a couple of playoff games, and the first round of the playoffs are the same exact week. So there'll be a very strong likelihood that we would have a playoff game here on Monday and Tuesday, and with the limited parking that we have, it would just simply be too much. The other reason is that the following week is SpongeBob the Musical, and the theater is transformed that week to do all of the technical part of the production, and they kind of commandeer it, and they bought the rights to that musical for that particular weekend, which is also a little bit ahead of schedule. So the reason, there's two things that came into play, the musical's a little earlier than what it is, and the playoffs are way earlier, because the state association, they knocked it, I think they put it ahead like three to four weeks to try to shorten the season. So it's kind of, so that's why a decision was made to put it over to Mountain View, so that we wouldn't have any chance of there being any type of parking issue or other disruptions.
Make sure it's in bold letters on the posting, because everybody will come there. So Mountain View, yes.
Let me ask that question.
Just as a procedural question, so what, Scott, you're putting in is the notice for the public session with the numbers, but if there's a change during the public session, the deliberative, we would have to re-vote on that, and then we would have to redo this and send it to the town.
So we talked about having a school board meeting right after.
You post one, just in case.
Immediate, yeah.
Just for this, not for any of our other stuff?
Precisely.
So we'll post that as well. So are you set then?
I'm all set with the warrant. Denise, right, we're good, you think?
Denise, you got everything?
Yep. So we'll take care of that tomorrow, you'll get that via PandaDoc tomorrow. And then the Budget Committee, their obligation is to sign off on what's called the MS-26, which is your, which is the proposed budget. Technically, it's their budget, but since both the school board and the Budget Committee have the same numbers, it's all a good thing, and they will sign off on that starting tomorrow afternoon. That has to be delivered to Town Hall. So that's it for that one.
Ellen, you have a question on the warrant?
Yeah. I just feel, these are the school board's warrants.
Yes.
And except for one, we've got, no, none of them, they're all being addressed by administrator, by an administrator. Is there a reason school board members don't want to stand up for our own warrants? We used to do that, we used to take that responsibility, and we did it ourselves, and I'm wondering why that has changed, or if anybody would like to speak to any of these? It just strikes me as curious. Nobody wants to speak to them? I don't mind speaking to it, you always, you guys always do a very good job, but I feel like it's our stuff.
In the sense of the teacher CBA, you know, Kate had done the presentation before the Budget Committee, she really knows this, the contract inside and out, and I think that one is kind of the, the one that, to me, makes the most sense for an administrator, you know, to do. In terms of the others, I offered, if somebody else would like to, I have the slide decks already prepared for all of these. This thing is ready to go. So if somebody else would like to present, or if you want me to co-facilitate with, you know, with you, be there to answer any questions, I'll do whatever you wish. I just, like I said, we just offered to do it.
Right. Does somebody want to speak on any of them? Jared's gonna be helping with the operating budget.
I can speak on anything you guys want me to. Normally, you know, and honestly, normally I take Scott's slides and tell them what to change anyway, like we do for a public session. But I'm, I'm willing to talk to anything that you guys need me to. I know that there's some concern, because I always vote no on Article four, about me speaking about that, but I think I represent the school board's interest as best I can. Five.
Yeah.
Whichever one it is.
Right.
But I represent your interests as best I can, and I'm willing to speak on anything that you guys want, think the school board should speak on, I will say.
It's up to whatever, I mean, we can leave it, or if somebody strongly feels they want to speak on something, we can do it now. If not, we'll just hold on.
I really think that the person that can speak, speak to the article very well, and because this is a, this is a, a group of people that don't understand this, don't understand the ins and outs of it, so if we have someone who knows the information down flat and twatting, give it to people, I think the person that knows all the information the best should be to do it. I don't necessarily think it has to be a school board member, I think it has to be the person who can give that information to the public the best, and make sure that our thoughts get out there to everybody and they understand.
So I'm good with leaving it the way it is, unless somebody wants to speak to an article. Ellen, do you want to speak to an article?
Well, I wasn't on these committees, I wasn't on the area agreement, I would think it would be somebody who was on that who could speak to it. I'll do the area agreement, but I wasn't on that committee, so I'm happy to do it, and it's pretty simple. How does the board feel? I mean, it's okay, we can leave it at Scott, I just felt.
If I may, Ms. Terry. Ellen, if you're enthusiastic about the material, and you have the historical knowledge to be able to let people know what it means to them, so that they vote in an informed way. I'm all for it. If you feel passionately about it, then, and you want to step up and do it, I support you in that endeavor, just like I would anybody else, for any kind of article.
I can do the area agreement, if that's okay with the board.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. So Ellen will speak to the area.
Can I add, Scott, that he's letting the floor down low?
Yep. And send that to me, so I can practice, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, for Chris Scott. Anyone else before we move on?
Am I allowed?
Are you allowed to?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I'm on gray area. There's nothing gray about you, actually. You're fine. If Mr. Gross wants to go to the bullpen.
You know what?
In time, you are nothing but a value add, Caleb.
Caleb, you've done so much, we'll do one together, all right? It'll be good, it'll be good practice for you.
Can I help Jared present the offering?
Sure, we're gonna get you in there.
All right.
Yep.
So Scott, Jared, and Caleb.
Yep.
Great, perfect, thank you, Caleb.
People should, you guys, you do know that he attended a couple of these meetings, pretty much did an awesome job, yeah, so.
All right, so we all set now? Everybody's good?
Yep.
Okay.
And can I just ask, with the, when will the presentation be done for the two awards? Are they, will they be done in?
The deliberative.
Yeah, they'll be ready for deliberative. And probably not any sooner. Probably gonna be coming in a little hot on that.
Yeah.
So it will have to be in a productive day.
How'd you know?
Although, there will be video, there will be video.
All right, so we're moving on to Health Trust refund.
Yeah, so I'm gonna turn this over to Laura just a sec, but we were very pleased to get a refund from Health Trust, and this is the second year in a row, based upon, we'd call it favorable healthcare and dental claims experience as a result of COVID-19. So folks were not doing, maybe were not having as many elective-type surgeries, or going to the doctor as much, and because of that, the claims experience was lower, and by their bylaws, they can't retain funds, they cannot use an over-collection of premium to then offset the next year's premium. Their bylaws don't allow that, they got in trouble for that many years ago when it was LGC, so they have to issue a refund. Before I turn it over to Laura, again, I want to thank Laura, because as much of this has been a blessing, Laura has probably put in at least 50 hours on this refund process, and then staff has probably put in another 20-plus hours to make sure that all these checks and stuff have gone out, and Laura will kind of go over all of that, but that said, I'll turn it over to you, Laura, to try to give, you know, more or less the nuts and bolts of what this was all about.
Thank you, and thank you for having me tonight. I don't get to often come, but it's nice to be in front of you. So SAU 19 in total received $756,142 from Health Trust this year. That is more than what we received in FY '20 for the surplus. When Cheryl was here earlier, you heard that there was about $200,000 in miscellaneous revenue that was an over-collection last year. That was the FY '20 Health Trust. This year, Goffstown received, as part of the SAU portion, Goffstown received $578,961, and I'll get all of these numbers to you, Denise, of course. That money was broken out, and based on union agreements and benefits for non-union employees, we returned the portion that the employee paid back to them. We also returned terminated employee portions, and the district kept the rest. So for payroll, we issued 297 refunds to employees, and for accounts payable, both for terminated employees and New Hampshire retirees that are still on our plan, we returned 123 payments to them. That leaves the Goffstown district with a total revenue of $441,400, approximately. We are looking to do a public hearing upcoming to accept that money, and what that will do is it will allow us to add it to our revenue budget, and add it to our expenditure budget, and then be able to spend that money. If it is denied at a public hearing, it drops into fund balance as an over-collection of revenue. Any questions?
So would the public hearing be at the next fourth week? Because that's October 21st.
Yeah, there's no, there's no immediate rush, right, Laura?
Right.
In terms of doing this? One of the things that Cheryl stressed with us, and I'll last on it, was because we had a relatively high fund balance, she had said, please, you know, strongly consider the 5% contingency fund, which we did, but also think about, you have any, like, smaller type of capital projects where you have this surplus that you didn't expect, where you might be able to do some projects, so look at your CIP, et cetera. So if, you know, the board has, we want to give the board options, and again, you don't have to spend $441,000 on miscellaneous capital improvements projects, but you might decide to do half. And you might decide to put, you know, when you come to that meeting in June, when we have to decide what's gonna go into fund balance, you'll have, hopefully you'll have that 5% fund balance that's passed, you'll have more tools and more discretion, but we felt that it would be incumbent to hold this public hearing sooner rather than later, because if there are projects that you want to look at, Laura and I, and Randy, who's your facilities director, the superintendent, we have to kind of look at our CIP and kind of look, look at that and be strategic, and not wait. It's very, very difficult for Laura and I, and Randy, to try to think about these things in the middle of June. So we want to be, you know, proactive, you know, with you on that. So we'll make the same recommendation in New Boston on Wednesday, to, you know, to hold a public hearing, just to give you that option. Okay?
Any questions for Scott and Laura? See and none, thank you. All right, now you can go home. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
You did such a good job, maybe you'll fill in for me next time.
All right, so moving on, Budget Committee, Jared?
Budget Committee, we had our public hearing, things went relatively better than I thought they would, surprisingly. I wanted to give my shout out to the teachers, I was waiting to my section instead of doing it, but I know that many of us did, so again, adding my preponderance of appreciation to everybody else's, as well as Mr. Bulkey, thank you for standing up and speaking to talk about the importance of our teachers, I think that that also really resonated with the Budget Committee, and again, my thank you personally to you for doing that. As discussed, we have our deliberative session on Monday, the 7th, with a snow date on Wednesday, the 9th, at Mountain View Middle School, so if you do not know that now, well, now we do where the location is. So that is at 7:00 PM, and for those of you that are interested in the town deliberative session, that is taking place on Tuesday, the day after, so that will be on February 8th. So if you do want to attend the town session, as well as taxpayers of the town, which all of our reps are here, that is when the town portion is being done as well.
And where does that happen?
That is at the middle school. Also at Mountain View. Yeah, so all of our deliberative sessions are no longer on Saturdays like they had been prior years, they are weekdays, and they are at the middle school.
I hope somebody's getting a heck of a lot of information out, because, I mean, I'm circulating different places, and this is the first I've heard of this, so I hope we're getting information out, because there are gonna be a lot of people gonna be upset, so.
Upset?
That they, they're gonna come here.
Oh, yeah.
And not realize, and we put signs.
They're gonna come here on the wrong day, all together.
Put signs on the doors, please.
We could also just like make the front sign saying, "Budget hearing, two sevens, Mountain."
Deliberative session, Mountain View, something.
Yeah, to that point, Brian, I hope it's possible just to get, in general, to get the word out in the newsletters that go out. That way, I think marketing says you have to say it many times.
Probably hear it once.
Yep, I could do that.
Newsletters, Facebook, websites.
That's Budget Committee.
All right. So PNC, Rheta?
So there's no committee, anyway, because PNC has not yet, as it's ended up in January or February, we don't have a scheduled meeting. And I'm gonna be talking, what we've been talking about the last couple of meetings were the mission and vision statements, and some of that will be dependent on the, I think Brian will be giving updates or the retreats, and also, CNE, so I'll speak to this a little bit later, but the, so we're just working on the district vision and mission statement, and right now, it'll make during the student ballot, so I'll talk about that a little bit later.
All right, Mary, thank you. Policy review, we did not meet in January, but we are meeting on February 14th at 5:30 at the SAU, and I have old business later for policy. CNE?
CNE will be meeting on March 14th at 7:00 PM at the SAU. And also, I had, we spoke about the handbooks?
Yep, those are further down in the business.
Oh, okay.
Is there anything else?
No.
No, we'll come back to that later. All right. Facilities Planning Committee, Jared.
Facilities Planning Committee, we met last week. I will note that our attendance has severely dwindled at our last meeting. So we are expecting, we are forecast, or we will be having one more meeting in February, where at that time, hopefully, we will have our options to present to the school board, as well as the facilities planning committee's recommendation from those options. So I'd be looking probably to report back in the March timeframe from that committee to this body.
All right, thank you, Jared. All right, Brian, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. I have a number of things to go through this evening, including some additional information that Mr. Gross and I would like to share around school busing. So this is probably going to take a little longer than it normally would. I might be able to suggest that the calendar that we have under new business, we could postpone. That's not anything that I have to have done until April, so that's not time sensitive. But let me go through my report, and then we'll get into the bus information. So we receive a review every year from the Department of Ed looking at what they call disproportionality data, and it looks at special education data. And we received no findings this year for the review that they did of school discipline. So that was a positive thing. On January 20th, we did a booster shot clinic for 12- to 15-year-olds. We had about 180 who signed up to participate in that, so I wanted the board to be aware. We have donated the old pickup truck that we had, that the board had approved us purchasing a new one, to the fire department for training purposes, so allowing them to do extractions, cut it up, light it on fire, whatever they want to do, have at it. We were happy to do that, and they were happy to get it. So I think that they have a lot of training that they need to do. I wanted to let you know that the Mountain View, Washington DC trip is being scheduled and being planned. This is not a school-sponsored trip. Our only role is typically attendance waiving of days. So this is something that we're not taking any role in, but I wanted you to know that it's moving forward. We will be offering the SAT as our state assessment here at the high school on March 23rd. We had been anticipating this to be the traditional SAT, and we have been notified that it will again be the digital version of the SAT, which is, there are pros and cons to both, but I did want to let the board know that that's happening, that it will be the digital test. And consistent with what we've done in past years, that likely would be a day that we offer kind of a distance learning type approach for people who are not taking the SAT, so that we're able to have all of our hands on deck, all of our resources available for the SAT. Tomorrow evening, we're pleased to have Jeff Levin, who is somebody who works with Chief Justice, former Chief Justice John Broderick, doing a presentation on mental health for high school parents, and it's called COVID and Beyond: Raising Kids in the Digital Age, A Mental Health Webinar Series Helping Parents and Guardians Help Their Students. So I think that there are, we're anticipating about 10 sessions of that, and we're happy to work with Jeff and to bring that resource to our parents. As we've said many times, I don't think we could parent enough resources. It's always hard to parent kids. It's exceptionally hard to parent kids during a pandemic. So more information will be forthcoming on that. Rheta had mentioned that I had asked and had recommended a mid-year retreat focused around strategic planning and CIP. I think that's going to be hard for us to schedule, so I thought I'd just take a shot and say, how about this as an option? We have a regularly scheduled meeting on February 21st. That could be the day that we do it. We would need to check in with St. Anselm College to see if we would be able to procure a room for them. They've been very accommodating to us in the past, but that was one option, and we would not have our regular meeting here in the library. This would be kind of a different meeting. But there's kind of a lot going on in terms of SRF funds, work of the facilities planning committee, and I think the board really needs some dedicated time to focus on these very important topics. So maybe people can give that some thought, and if that would be agreeable, maybe we swap out that on February 21st.
Now, would that be like our typical retreat at 3?
I don't know that we would need to do it that early, and I think we can, I think we could probably even keep the regular time. I just think having nothing else on the agenda, no other reports, just so we could just really talk about the facilities projects, the funding methodologies that we have available, and just focus on that.
Dan? Yeah, I heard you. Go ahead.
Keep in mind, Brian, that we're not going to have a regular scheduled meeting on February 7th either, because it's the delivery.
We need a meeting.
So that would be the whole month of February that we wouldn't be.
Having the school board meeting.
Something to think about.
The only other option, obviously, is to add another day, find another time, which we're open to. We'll do whatever the board would like. We just, I was trying to just give you a date, you know, as opposed to.
Or we could add an hour and do the real business part, keep it to an hour, and then stick to the other stuff.
Right, which we've done before with retreats.
I think we could, I think we could do that, particularly if we might be able to start a little earlier. Maybe we could do like a 6 o'clock start if that was agreeable.
It's still a pared-down schedule, so no committee assignment report out.
Right, we would try to really shorten the agenda, and if we don't have a lot of pressing business, then we could really dedicate the additional time to kind of that more strategic planning discussion.
But I think we need to have at least some.
Okay. This is Warren, does that sound reasonable to you? Okay, so if everyone is good with that, we'll continue with that. The Mountain View Middle School Search Committee had their first meeting last night. Jared is your representative on that, along with Kerry Jenks, who's the New Boston Chair. Productive meeting, Mr. Gross, you were there, and at this point, they went through resumes. They identified candidates that they intend on interviewing, and that will be happening next week?
This week.
This week.
This Thursday.
So that process is full speed ahead. I'll get into a few of the COVID updates, and then I really want to spend some time talking about school busing. My indication at this point, I think cases are trending in the right direction. We're seeing reductions at the state level, we're seeing some reductions at the county level, the town level, and in the schools. So just anecdotally, we had 35 cases today. Last week on Monday, we had 50. So I think we are trending in the right direction. So just very quickly, the state announced 2,981 cases over the last 14 days. Hillsborough County slightly lower at 2639, 20.4% test positivity rating, 299 current school clusters, 76 current school outbreaks. And then, in terms of busing, what I would really like to do is, Mr. Gross has put together, we worked together on this last week and then today. We have a very lengthy, involved memo that the board has copies of, and I shared with Scott that I may consider sending out. This might be more information that parents need. But the short version is, the Goffstown Truck Center has had exceptionally challenging staff shortages. So we contract for 22 buses, and as of right now, they only have 10 drivers. So think about 22 buses, we should have 22 drivers, we only have 10. And what that has meant has been, for the last several weeks, every morning at 5:30, I get a notification, I connect with the Truck Center and find out what runs are going to be either delayed or not available at times, and I communicate that out. I do that also every afternoon or evening. Sometimes it's three times a day, but it has really taken up a lot of time and just continues to add to the overall challenges. So Scott, if, given that it's already 10 minutes past 9:00 and you're already yawning.
You saw that?
I still could make out under that mask. Can you go through this, I would say, quickly, because the board can certainly read it, but at home, I want parents to know, this is a massive issue for us. And I was saying to Scott, in all the 28 years that I've been doing this, up until very recently, I had never heard of a school bus run being canceled. I had never experienced that, not one time. I can say, "Late," I can say, maybe a different bus had to pick up, a different driver, all of those things, but I have never, ever canceled runs. And I want the board to know, and I want the public to know, that I feel absolutely terrible about this. This is a massive inconvenience for families. This is obviously a contract issue with the Truck Center as a vendor for us, as a contracted service, but this is creating significant disruption for our families. And we're talking, on any given day, it can be as many as seven bus runs that are impacted. So Scott, why don't I hand it over to you? But again, I just want everyone to understand, this is something that we have floated, an incredible number of creative solutions to try to think about this. And many parents have emailed me, I'd like to thank them, and said, "Brian, have you thought about this? Brian, have you thought about this?" Ellen, you did one this weekend. I continue to appreciate that. I haven't had anything yet that we hadn't kind of kicked around, but that's good. So with that, Mr. Gross.
All right. So again, you can feel free to read, you know, the memo for some of the more background information, but a couple of noteworthy things that I wanted to mention in terms of background is, last year, even though we're contracted for 22 buses, we only ran 17. We got a credit of five bus runs, and that credit was a little over 272,000, which dropped into your fund balance, which then offset the tax rate. So that was one of the questions that I received from a concerned parent, was, well, are we going to see, you know, monies come back? The answer to that is absolutely yes. As the superintendent mentioned, should have 22, we consolidated that to 17 bus runs. And as of today, it was the worst of the worst, and that was 10 available bus drivers. Unfortunately, they've got drivers who are on COVID protocol, two of them are out on a medical issue, and a couple have resigned over the last couple of weeks. In response to this, STA, when I say STA, that's Goffstown Truck Center. So Goffstown Truck Center was bought out by STA, Student Transportation of America. So when I say STA and GTC, those are the acronyms there. But they do what's called double runs or back-to-back runs. So what we've had to do is essentially, the elementary middle school is the most prevalent. They have to drop, pick up the kids, drop them off at those schools, and then go back and do another, another run. And as I mentioned, as the superintendent mentioned, he's sending out emails two and three times a day to try to keep people informed.
Scott, if I could just clarify, not emails. I either send text messages, it's simple, or I send voice messages, just because of the complexity of the other thing.
So the one thing that we have to be very mindful of is that even with our 17 bus routes, the likelihood of only having 13 or 14 drivers for the remainder of this year means that we're more than likely going to have double bus runs for the foreseeable future, perhaps till the end of the school year. So I think it's incumbent upon us, the administrators, to share with you, the board and the community, the complexity of this issue. And this is what I think that folks kind of need to understand, is that the process of hiring and training a school bus driver is complicated. On average, it takes two to three months, and that's not just here for Goffstown Truck Center. This is statewide. I'm going to tell you why. School bus drivers are required to complete 14 hours of classroom training at a minimum. They have to take numerous New Hampshire Department of Motor Vehicle exams, general knowledge, passenger safety, school bus operation, and then they have to get an endorsement for state and federal certifications. They're required to complete a minimum of six hours of driving time. And for someone who holds already a commercial driver's license, six hours may be sufficient. However, the vast majority of our school bus drivers do not come with a CDL. They come with a regular driver's license. And STA typically provides 15 to 20 hours of actual in-bus training for those folks, depending upon their comfort level and how well they progress. This includes things like parallel parking a school bus, backing up, safely backing up a school bus, knowing about all the equipment, how to drive a school bus in inclement weather, all of those things. The one thing that we cannot lose focus on throughout this whole thing, and this was shared with me by a former employee of the Goffstown Truck Center, is that we are transporting our most precious cargo. So we can't, no one should be cutting any corners in terms of educating our drivers on how to safely operate this vehicle that takes our children to school. On top of that, school bus drivers are required to take a pre-employment physical, as well as a drug test. And lastly, drivers have to go through a background check through, by the New Hampshire State Police. So there's a lot of, you know, formality that has to happen, which is all good. The typical timeframe, as I said, eight to 12 weeks, is largely dependent on many factors that the Goffstown Truck Center, STA, can't control. So first and foremost, the Department of Motor Vehicle written tests are administered after the trainee completes their classroom training. So they have to go to a local DMV for that. And again, they have to successfully complete all of those tests. So according to what we've been told, not everybody does that, and, you know, at least half of them will fail at least one exam and have to retake it. Road tests are typically administered at only two locations, close to Goffstown, that's both Nashua and Concord. And if a trainee does not pass the road test, there's a 10-day waiting period for them to retake that exam. Lastly, the state police are responsible for the background checks and what's called a rostering process, and that can take one to three weeks. Depending upon the school bus driver and the routes they drive, there are typical days about two to three hours in the morning and two to three hours in the afternoon. Most drivers make $20 or more per hour, and the bus company has implemented a $1,500 sign-on bonus to attract new drivers. And then based upon the scheduled hours, most of our drivers are either retirees or parents with flexible schedules. So here are some of the options that we explored, and as the superintendent mentioned, we have received emails from folks. I know I have reached out to former drivers, current drivers, to try to see what some of the things that we can and cannot do. So one of the suggestions was, could we use school or town employees who hold commercial driver's licenses to drive school buses during this challenging time? So we've heard that other communities are employing firefighters or DPW truck drivers, or in our case, we have a few employees who do carry a CDL. The answer to that is that according to state law and regulations, which I gave you copies of, you still need a school bus driver certification in addition to the CDL to operate a school bus. So it doesn't preclude them from being a school bus driver, but you still have to go through all of that training. We had heard, should we use National Guard troops to drive school buses during this crisis? We can't do that. That would be executive order from the governor. However, in Massachusetts, Governor Baker did do that, but I want to caution you in that that executive order allowed them to drive, you know, pretty much passenger vans, not big buses. So that is, may sound great, but in practicality, it was a Band-Aid. We have explored the purchasing or leasing of 12- to 15-passenger vans that don't require a CDL to operate. Once again, state law does not allow a school district to use a 12- to 15-passenger van to transport kids from home to school and vice versa. We can do that for co-curricular activities and field trips, but we can't do it for school-to-home transportation. If the school district leased or purchased these vans with the expectation that we would use it to pick up kids and drop off kids to school, you would still have to, the drivers would all have to be school bus certified. So you have to go back to step one and go through all that. And if that's the case, you might as well have them drive a bigger school bus.
Scott, before you go on, what we were seeking to do with that is, if we had bus runs that weren't able to be covered, we wanted to see if we could use the vans to go collect groups of kids and do like a hub where we would have one centralized pickup location so that the buses that we do have available. So we, I'm telling you, we have turned over near about every stone I could possibly think of. But this one had promise. I had a little bit of a creative interpretation that you can't transport to and from school, but you can to and from co-curricular activities. So I wanted to explore a morning academic hub.
At Dunkin' Donuts.
Mr. Gross was very much not in support of me pursuing this, and I understand why from a liability perspective, but we thought that this might have been a good answer to try to minimize on some of the runs, that we could take some of that burden off.
So we have also explored, should the school district contract with another commercial transportation provider and/or a limousine company? So not to give a plug for a business in town, but Grace Limousine was a company that I was interested in contacting. But when I spoke to the state police, they told me that we couldn't do that. Here's the same thing, the drivers, most of their drivers probably have commercial driver's licenses, and they do transport adults to, you know, sporting events, et cetera, but in order to transport kids, again, home to school, you have to have that school bus driver certification. In addition to that, you would have to get a waiver on equipment, because school buses have to have rear backup indicators, cameras, the, you know, the emergency, you know, stop arm and special light bars. The state police told me that you can get waivers on those things, but know that those waivers could go away like that, meaning that if they saw an uptick of accidents involving these vehicles, the commissioner could withdraw that waiver. these vehicles, the commissioner could withdraw that waiver. So, he also shared with me, that I spoke to the state police, that there are other school districts that do use commercial carriers or, because they are certified, but lately more and more districts are calling him because those companies cannot get drivers and/or they don't want to do it anymore. So, again, that is prevalent in the western part of the state where they have more geography. The school district should consider requesting assistance from the state of New Hampshire Resources. So, this is one that really is something for board discussion at some point. There remains the possibility that certain New Hampshire state laws and regulations could be temporarily suspended via a governor's executive order or through legislative assistance to expedite the process at the New Hampshire DMV. So, perhaps, again, I'm not an attorney, I don't know if it's possible, but, you know, could they, could an executive order waive the ten-day waiting period? Could an executive order expedite or offer additional road tests? Because right now, they're only offered a couple of times a week. Could, could, could a legislative ask or a governor's ask, say, okay, DMV, you will be open on Saturdays for any bus driver who wants to take a test to make it more convenient? And lastly, could executive order allow for fifteen passenger vans for home-to-school pickup? Again, we can't do that right now. And again, that would be something that, you know, this board, if you want us to make those phone calls to our state reps, state senators, the governor's office, we'll do that. Number six, the school district should review the contract with STA and explore all available remedies up to and including termination. So, I have reviewed the contract with, with our, with our provider, and it does allow for termination based upon unsatisfactory performance, and that is in paragraph five of the, number five of the, of the contract. But it also contains what's called force majeure language, and that's in paragraph fifteen, which states that the district shall excuse the carrier if there are performance issues outside their control. It doesn't specifically say COVID-19, but that's what I would argue if I were them. It's also noteworthy to mention that STA provided the district with credits during the FY20 school year when schools were closed due to COVID, even though it was questionable whether or not they were legally obligated to do so. So, we have had a very long history, decades-long relationship with the Goffstown Truck Center. They do employ a lot of Goffstown and area employees. This is the same company, I think they're making a very good faith effort, it's just, this is just the situation that we're in. I would say that I think a termination of the contract based upon the current circumstances would be very, very challenging, based upon the force majeure language. And I would also argue based upon what they have done in, in the past in terms of dealing with this. Should the school district implement GPS technology and mobile app tracking on school buses to provide parents with real-time information on school bus locations? The superintendent has been asking me for this for the last two to three years. The Truck Center, STA, is looking into it as we speak. However, we do have to vet some consequences of that. There are some, you have to make sure that the people who should have that location have it, and others who don't need access don't have access for, for privacy and for personal security reasons. Number eight, the school dis-
Scott, can I just add to seven before you go on?
Yeah.
I think this was the only place that we put this. We also had thought about a completely different model in terms of school bus stops. So, instead of thinking about fixed, set school board, uh, school stops for the buses, why couldn't we think about it based on the ridership of the day? So, almost like an Amazon delivery person who, they know where their stops are, if, if we had the technology to be able to have parents go in and say, I need a ride today, and then the routes get generated using software, that would perhaps be different routes on, depending on the day. This is a very different way of thinking. I think that this is probably a little too much change, a little too progressive, but someday, this, this should not be that hard or that complicated because the technology exists. Because, you know, if, if I've got a bus that's going way over here in that particular day, those two kids aren't on it, I might have just saved twenty minutes off a route. But we don't have any of that kind of real, live data set capability. So, again, I, I think that that's probably too much, but that's just an example that I, I think that there's a lot of different ways we can think about this, and I think we need to think very differently about how to solve this problem.
If I may, there's another thing, I think it's still happening. At least when my kids were on the buses, the buses stopped at every single driveway instead of making the kids all go to a specific corner.
They, they don't do that.
They don't stop at?
They do on certain roads that we deem it to be a safety issue. But we absolutely have lots and lots of kids walking.
To a corner someplace or?
Yeah, and in general, we don't go down subdivisions.
Yeah, we've got eight.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, if, if there's a cul-de-sac, we don't go down there. Those kids come up to that, whatever that main road is.
Okay, because it must be where I once lived because every driveway is stopped.
Yeah, the, the only example of, of those would be, you know, like on Route 13, you know, some of-
Wallace Road.
You know, the busier Wallace Road would be a good example.
Yeah.
Okay.
Number eight, the school district should insist that bus route consolidations and cancellations are not the same routes each day. And I think this is the one that, you know, Brian and I have focused a lot on. So, we're aware of this issue, and we've raised that with the bus company. We've been informed that not all of the current bus drivers, so I'm going to say the ten that are running routes now and the other three or four that are ill, have the flexibility one, nor the desire to do double routes. And that we're working with them, we had conversations today about different incentives that both we as a district could possibly explore, but STA as well regarding compensation to encourage that flexibility. But I need to be blunt here and say that some drivers can only work until a certain time of the day if they have another job. Others might have childcare issues, others simply, I, you know-
I'm comfortable on-
I'm comfortable on this route, I don't want to do anything else, and do you want to have me even do this route? So, this is the world that we're living in, but-
So, Scott, if I could just add, my hope here is, and I know exactly the buses that I contact every single day, I wanted everyone to feel a little bit of the pain and not have a small group feeling all the pain. And that's kind of what we have now. And the reason for that is just exactly what Scott shared. There are drivers who aren't willing or, you know, not able to do these other runs, and instead of disrupting the whole system, they've, they've targeted these runs that they're able to consolidate, to combine, to double up. And this is one that unfortunately, I feel very badly for parents, that it's always the same runs, as opposed to every bus is delayed on some kind of a rotating schedule. So, if, if we're going to have shortages, let everybody feel it and not have it be the same five buses over and over and over. And this is one that I think, and, and we need to give Goffstown Truck some latitude, that they need to, you know, manage and run their business. This is one that we, I don't see eye to eye with them on because it's simply not fair. It, it seems more equitable that everybody would kind of share the disruption and the inconvenience.
So, on page five, these are a list of other considerations that I also want to quickly go through. For the board and for the community, we will continue to receive financial credits for any buses that don't run due to a lack of bus drivers. We are talking about a review of current, current bus routes and considering further route consolidations to align with the number of current drivers. So, as I said before, if we've got seventeen current routes but only thirteen or fourteen drivers, then maybe we need to think about thirteen or fourteen routes. This would likely require a transportation survey because we don't know who, who really desperately needs the transportation versus who just goes once a week. It's very difficult to, to, to program a route if you don't know who's going to go on the bus. And, and just so you know, when we had twenty-two routes, it's based upon eligible kids that might, that, that could take the bus, not, not who actually takes the bus. We have to consider the elimination or significant contraction of high school bus routes with a focus on K through eight transportation. High school bus transportation is not required by state law, and further on, neither is number four. So, but, review bus routes and bus stop locations for students who have lived less than two miles from the school. Once again, we do not have to provide transportation to high school students and for students who reside two miles from the school. With current double runs, consideration for swapping the route, so the impacts are not the same cohorts of students, meaning that if you're consolidating Bus Eight and Bus Fifteen, it shouldn't always be Bus Eight that gets to school, you know, early, and then Fifteen, that's always a little late. It should, you know, how that, and we're working with STA on that. We'll have to consider, again, these are all items for consideration, changing school start and completion times, other districts have done that. Consider additional incentives for school bus drivers. We look at this as a combined partnership between our community, our school district, and the Truck Center, and if we have to, you know, we have to, you know, provide other incentives, I think we should consider that. On the medium term, we need to consider hybrid roles within the school district whereby an employee drives a school bus and also fulfills their role during the school day. That could be in facilities, food service, clerical support, et cetera. So, I don't believe that this problem is going to go away come September. I think we're going to continue to have this problem, and we have to think outside the box on a sustainable business model or a model that, that will, that will attract and retain, retain bus drivers. It's not just STA's problem or Durham Transportation or First Student, who, who also has a large market share, it's collectively all of our problems. Medium and long term, we're talking about a create, to create a pool of emergency school bus drivers from school and town departments. Again, that would not be, they would not be doing regular routes, but under the current situation that we're in right now, having a reserve corps, shall we say, of school bus drivers would be very, very helpful. And I have already reached out to one town department with, with respect to that, and they were open-minded to the idea.
Scott, I would share, and I'm happy to put myself out here, I'm willing to do this. I don't think it's necessarily probably the best use of my time. It would be hard for me to drive a bus in dealing with any other things that sometimes happen in the mornings, but I'm willing to drive a bus, Randy Roaring's willing to drive a bus, Frank McBride's willing to drive a bus. There, there are a number of us that if we had to create a group of kind of emergency drivers, we're willing to do it.
But that, that takes the months to get that.
It takes time, you know, and then, you know, again, we're willing to do it.
Number ten, within our control, I think, provide staff at our schools to supervise students during the morning and afternoons that would allow parents and guardians greater flexibility with the drop-off and pickup time. So, some parents, if they're able to say hypothetically drop their kid off at seven-thirty at Mountain View Middle School, even though school doesn't start until an hour later, that's the type of flexibility that I think we could support, you know, for our community.
Scott, this one came from Mrs. Kohler. So, I thought that was a great idea, that she had asked short money to make it easier for parents, that if, if you can drop off at seven instead of seven forty-five when it's madness, when everybody's dropping off, let's give them the flexibility to do that.
Number eleven, consider the lease slash purchase of two or more fifteen, twelve to fifteen passenger vans for co-curricular activities for the next school year. This is something that, that's, this is one of the topics that I want to talk to the board about on your February meeting, because if we decide to go this route, again, I'm going to have to order these things now so I can have them by September. There are four to six-month lead times on these things now. And I have been working with athletic director Justin Hoff, who did a lot of research already on this, but it's something that I, I want the board to think about in February. We have to consider remote learning days when there's a large percentage of buses that cannot run due to driver shortages. We've heard that from the community, and, you know, is there a trigger where that happens? And then lastly, we call this a call to action in the greater Goffstown area, and that is to partner with STA, the state police, the DMV to expedite driver training, condense the current two to three, I should say, month testing and onboarding process to one to two months. And that is possible. It's going to require us to obviously reach out to our contacts legislatively as well as at the DMV and state police, but I do believe that we did receive a commitment from STA today that they would give us a dedicated one-to-one, a trainer, so that if we wanted to do trainings on weekends or in the evenings, we would be able to have those classes. So, Caleb, you seem very, you're going to drive a bus for us? Excellent. Well, I'll put that in the budget presentation, don't worry.
I'm not even eighteen yet.
Doesn't matter, I think we'll get you in.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it does matter, but, when do you turn eighteen?
June.
Oh, okay, forget, forget you. Okay. You know, so, we have been, as you can see through this, I also put in here this appendix, and these are all of the state laws that apply to school buses and school bus drivers as well as the regulations, which is SAF. Hold on, I think it was, give you that, in case somebody's curious. Got the number. But when you click on those hyperlinks, this, this gives you everything that you want. And I, I got this from state trooper Greg Hildreth, and he, he spoke to me for half an hour last week on all this.
So, I'd like to thank Scott for his hard work on this. I'd like to thank him for trying to bring me in on this topic. And again, I would apologize to families that I, I feel so terrible that this is so incredibly disruptive.
Go ahead, Ellen.
This appears to, I mean, obviously, I wrote it down here, I hope, I'm not going to forget my question. More and more parents are going to be driving morning and afternoon, so the issue of traffic and in and out. It's, it's, is now and is going to continue to get worse and worse. So, anything that we or the police department, anybody can do to help with that issue at several of our schools, particularly, I'm thinking of Maple Ave and Bartlett particularly, to help with that, it's going to be crazy, absolutely crazy. And the idea of having the earlier, if, I don't know if it needs to be staff or can we do volunteers or whatever, that there's a consistent way kids can have, like, we have an after-school program, can we have a preschool, uh, not a preschool, a, a before school childcare thing going on?
Which we do have at, at, it's a Y and it's separate.
Yeah, right.
This drop-off thing would be more supervision than-
Right, supervision of, of the kids, of children, and it could be large numbers. And what was the other thing? Oh, children are getting to school quite late.
Some.
In my, some are.
Yeah.
Am I correct that they're not being penalized for coming in late?
Correct.
It's not counting, however, they are missing classes. They're an hour late, I don't know what each school's, you know, day is like, first thing in the morning, but if we, if we haven't already, look into what, what kind of, again, supports those kids need if this is ongoing and keeps going. I know we want to change who's impacted by this, but-
And Ellen, I just want the record, you know, to reflect that what you just, you asked a question about kids are not being penalized. We did receive a phone call from a student, we are working with that school to make sure that the kid is not marked tardy because of that. But we did have one inconsistency there, and we're rectifying that.
Okay, very good. So, it's, and then the other issue is they're getting there late, and, and no fault of their own, but they're missing class time, and there's a disruption when they come in. Not, it's their fault, but there are considerations, and I don't know what school, a school district or a specific school can do to help with that, but this is just more stress on the kids.
Right, absolutely.
This is just more stress on the kids and our staff, which I'm becoming more and more concerned about personally for our staff.
Jared, go ahead.
The question I have is, we've lost some school bus drivers. Do we have any kind of exit interviews of why school bus drivers are resigning? Because I've heard word of mouth certain things, and I just didn't know if we've actually received any feedback.
We have, we don't have any kind of a formal process for exit interviews because they're not employees. So, we do for people who are our employees, but not as a vendor, we've, we've not done that.
So, has a vendor given us any feedback on why they're having people resign?
Yeah, so, I think my twenty-six years here, I've been able to make some pretty good connections with folks in the community. I- I received information with respect to that issue. And specifically, the, what I received information on was, I've offered to drive a bus, I used to drive a bus, I've offered, and STA has declined. So contacted the truck center, and one individual was willing to do a Dunbarton route. Well, that doesn't do us here in Goffstown any good, but it does do us good, because this terminal not only provides transportation to Goffstown, but it also provides transportation for Dunbarton. So that driver helping in Dunbarton does help Goffstown, because it frees up another body. So, and I have been told as of today that that person has been contacted, recontacted. Also was told that there were a couple of people who offered to only do a particular day, or I can only do a morning run, and again, I think that was initially rejected by the truck center, and speaking with the general manager today, they are reaching out to those people, and whatever they can get, they're going to get. So if that means that the person can only do one run in the morning, then that's what they're going to get. So we're going to have, you know, I hate to, it's probably a bad word, we're going to have a mix of kind of, you know, what's, you know, what's kind of going on. The one thing that I'm, I have the benefit of is, I'm part of an association of school business administrators, we talk about these, these types of topics, this is very similar in other communities, in terms of the shortage, COVID impacting the number of drivers, the turnover. There are bus drivers who don't want to get sick, there are bus drivers who don't want, who are fine themselves, but they don't want to be quote-unquote "a carrier" to get an elderly family member sick. And then there's the whole thing of, I want you to, please do other additional runs. No, I don't want to do that, so, but I don't think that there is exit interview-type scenarios, and I think I, you know where I'm coming from, that are, that are making this problem what it, what it is. The same people that have been in charge of the truck center have been doing it for a while. I just think that what we're seeing is just the impacts of two years of living through a pandemic, and people are kind of up to here, and just like we have lost teachers and staff and custodians, I think they're losing bus drivers. And I just see it, it's everywhere, whether it be the restaurant industry, it's just, it's just everywhere. But I do, I do know that they're going to try to cobble together whatever they, they can. I mean, we've even reached out to some of our own people in the district who we think have school bus driver certificates, certifications, and seeing, you know, would you drive? I've reached out to a town employee who I think has one, and see if he could, so we're, as the superintendent said, you know, over the last three, four weeks, I mean, we've been turning over every rock on this one. It's just there's...
We included on the memo, but we've also had, and this is something that, again, Scott has been patient tolerating me, what about doing it ourselves? No vendor service, hire our own drivers, manage our own fleet, we don't have the need to have any kind of profit, I would argue that we could pay better than other terminals would. So we've really looked at a lot of, a lot of options.
Jared, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, my, my specific question was not how we're going to fix the problem, I think that we're going to have a very robust discussion about that, but specifically, why are we losing bus drivers? And again, I'm going to interject, and I'm going to be very direct. I've heard that there are sometimes behavioral issues, and I shouldn't say sometimes, there are behavioral issues that may be driving our bus drivers to actually retire. And if that is the case, I'd like to know, is that the case? And potentially, what we might have to do as a policy-driven body to enforce current behaviors or better behaviors on our school buses, so that we don't have to have school bus drivers stop on the side of the road, get the students back in line, to then continue driving, because it's a hazard for them to continue driving. If that is an issue, I'd like to know that, and then see what kind of policy updates we might need to have on the bus itself.
Yeah, I don't think that is, I mean, certainly, I'm not going to say kids don't behave badly on the bus, they do. There are lots of students that we suspend off the bus, some of them short-term, some of them longer-term, but anytime the truck center has said we've had an issue on a bus, that same day or the next day, I will have principal on that bus. We, as administrators, ride school buses sometimes to show kids, you're going to misbehave, guess what, Principal Kohler's sitting in the backseat, she's going to know. So I don't, I think that that's probably rare, but I also think people have good days and bad days, and kids get under their skin, and let's be clear, this is a hard job for not a lot of money, with a lot of responsibility. I think it's a tough job, I really do, and I think our bus drivers that we have, we're very lucky to have them, Scott didn't say it, but we're also focused on...
Retention, yeah.
We want to keep. You know, yes, we'd like to attract more, but I also don't want to lose the ones I have. So we need to think about monetary incentivizing for the people that we still want to keep as well. But I think that, I think that misbehavior is probably not very often, and certainly, anybody who lets me know that there's an issue with the bus, I will have administrators on that bus the very next day. Or have the bus turn around and come back to school, and we'll deal with them then.
Yeah, I guess it would just be good to know, you know, from our contracted services, why people are leaving the job. If it's truly due to COVID or exhaustion, that's one thing, but if there's something else, you know, I would like to have that information, or somebody to have that information to make informed decisions. And it doesn't sound like we're getting that.
Ginny, I saw your hand.
I think one reason might be, and the same thing is happening to, like, my question nursing, is a lot of people that are doing it are retired, and with COVID and all the stress with bus driving and stuff, I think that they've just decided, I've been doing this job longer than I need to, because I, I can't be retired, and they've decided, okay, I'm just, I can be retired in a few years, I mean, now is the time to do it. And I think that's why a lot of people of retired ages that have enjoyed their job and have continued to do their job, even though they're retirement ages, have decided, okay, no, this is the time, that it's not so much fun. My other thing is, Scott, would you speak to, I've heard some concerns over people thinking we pay taxes for busing and we're not getting bus services, and so why are we paying, you know, our taxes? And coming up to voting for, for busing services and our budget, could you speak to more about how we are not getting charged for busing services?
Yeah, so, you know, so last year, we received a significant credit, $272,700 for buses that did not run. There was also a credit for trips that were not taken. As you know, we didn't provide transportation for Mountain View Athletics, we did a fund transfer on that, but we, the vast majority of the monies that were dedicated to transportation that were credited went back to reduced taxes, and that's the same exact thing that's going to happen this year. I, I have, so, and that's across the board in terms of Dunbar, I'm sorry, Goffstown and New Boston. So New Boston got a credit last year of low over $110,000. So special ed, same exact thing, there, there were providers that were closed, and we didn't pay Durham, we got a credit on the bill, we're talking another few hundred thousand dollars there as well. So we are not charged for the buses that do not run, and/or any portions of the routes that, so when they consolidate a route, so we already know that five routes are not running, so we're not paying for 22, we're only paying for 17. However, on a day like today, where there's, where there's only 10 buses running, we're only going to be paying for the 10 buses that ran, not, not the others that did not. And again, that's broken down on a daily basis, so, does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Jenny.
Brian, you may have said this at the beginning, I think a lot of, this is really helpful, it's such a complex issue, I think, getting on so many levels. Will this document, or a summary of this document be shared with the public, only because I think there's a lot of misinformation going around, people saying stuff, and I, I think this is just...
Yeah, so, Scott, Scott and I have talked about that, we certainly think that minimally sending out this memo might be helpful to some parents, so we thought about kind of a couple of different ways to communicate, but yes, we're very much thinking that we would do that.
So moving forward, what do you need from us tonight, or do we need to make a decision, maybe on February 7th, I know we have school board meeting, but I think this is something to try to help.
I think from a board perspective, the pursuit of either some kind of an executive order, which I think the governor would probably be reluctant to do altogether, I think there are no current executive orders, I don't think I'm wrong on that, there is no longer a state of emergency, so I think the executive order route would probably be, probably not very productive, but certainly looking at some of the legislative fixes for things like the 15-passenger van not being allowed, so you can use it for the tennis team, but you can't use it to get kids to a regional, you know, hub for a bus stop.
But how fast is, I mean, that's not a quick thing.
It's not a quick thing, but if we have, you know, five or six vans, and we had three runs that weren't, weren't happening, if I could get those kids to school, that's what I want to do. So I, again, none of this is perfect. We contract for 22 buses, what do I want? I want 22 buses, I want 22 drivers, I don't want the $272,000 credit, I want the service, but we can't get it.
So do you need anything from us tonight?
Scott?
I...
Think more informational, really.
I, I think that we have to explore the further consolidation of routes, and I think you have to understand that in practicality, if, even though we have 17 bus routes, but if we only have 13 or 14 bus drivers, then we got to be thinking about 13 or 14 bus routes. And that could mean that we do not provide service to a component of this district. And that's where your blessing is kind of needed, to know that there will be people who are going to be adversely affected by a further consolidation of bus routes. I, to give you as an example, we have a location that is within walking distance of Maple Avenue School, where we pick up probably eight students, okay? Could those students walk with their adult chaperone to the school? Yes. Do we require them to do so now? No. But if we were to consolidate routes, we wouldn't be picking up kids from a location that is less than a quarter of a mile from the school. So is this board, if we take these types of actions, the, those people are going to be potentially contacting you to say, wait, 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 we've always done this. And then our response is going to be, yeah, but we didn't have a pandemic and have all the situation that we're in, so sorry, we can't do it right now. And that's, that's something that superintendent, myself, we need your blessing on that, you know, it's dire, and we, you need to know that we probably need to further consolidate, or we're going to have continued double runs, kids, and, so what's better? So, but I don't know what's better, to be honest with you, but I think we got to look at all of these things. But knowing that the consequence is that you're going to be taking away a service that people currently enjoy.
Jared, go ahead.
Just in response to that, Scott, I don't necessarily disagree with you all the time, but we also have to consider what's an appropriate route, is there a sidewalk for those individuals?
Correct, safety, safety is, right.
You know, because, and going through a road or down a road that's, it's off a main road, you know, I used to live in Penardville, and yes, I can go to Bartlett, yes, I could walk there at short distance, but there is no sidewalk for kids to walk on sometimes, or ensuring that, you know, that the sidewalks are cleared is another example. So I agree with you, when it makes sense, and it's safe, sure, I think that that's a well-defined discussion.
Right.
Going back in time to when, you know, we were in elementary school, and we had to walk to school all the time, it was good exercise as well. I would also throw out, having, I think, Principal Kohler had an awesome idea, from what I heard, of, let's do intermurals at the middle school or at the high school, get the kids in early at 7 o'clock, 6:30, do pickup basketball, floor hockey, something that also gets them going. That's something that I know we did in junior high when we went early, and I actually look forward to going to school early to participate in those events. If that's an opportunity that we can give to our parents, that they can do the drop-off before they go to work, that's also an option, as long as we have the supervision. So I think that there's a lot of things that we can do, and, you know, I think we just need to start doing them, because this is not something that we can wait until the February timeframe, we need to start implementing actions now, because as another board member mentioned, the congestion at the school for drop-off and pickup is becoming dangerous, especially with consolidated communications, working on the power, or the lines all the time around the schools themselves, something that we need to consider.
And Jared, some of these things, I think, what we, some of the options require a non-public discussion, because they're, they deal with our contract, they deal with finances, and they're a non-public discussion.
Go ahead, Alan.
Not to belabor it, but I would think in the terms of consolidated, I, just as one board member, while I realize it, it's terribly inconvenient and can cause other issues, but I'd rather see high schoolers need to figure out how to get to school, as opposed to little kids standing on the corner in the cold weather, wondering when their bus is coming, because we don't have to transport high school. And if that alleviates runs, or...
It doesn't, so this is...
Not at all?
I got to tell you, I'm ready to pull the plug on high school transportation, I was ready a year ago.
Okay.
The only way that it would potentially help us, based on our meeting, Scott and I met with the truck center today, is if we did a two-tiered elementary and middle school run, so that you would have kind of an early group, that might be your floor hockey kind of kids, like Jared was saying, and then you go back out and do other runs. So that, there's, there is some possibility, but the, the assessment of the truck center has been that elimination of high school won't fix the problem.
Certainly not completely, but it's got to reduce the number of kids on a bus, it's got to reduce the stops, the number of stops.
Keeping in mind, Alan, if you only have 13 or 14 drivers, you only got 13 or 14 drivers when you've got 17 runs. So, as, we talked about this, we've been talking about this for a while now, but we talked about it again, once again today, we would either have to adjust bell times and/or create what you just mentioned, Jared, where we have a before and/or after-school type remedy, where, where these kids, that earlier run would have supervision while the other run got them. So essentially, what would happen is that we would have potentially half of our elementary and middle school kids getting to their schools 45 minutes early.
Then we have to have staff.
Then you got to have staff, correct. So I just, we, we pretty much put down all, you know, all, I guess my other question is, is there anything that we have put down as an option, which you, you were like, nope, this is, we are not doing this? Or is this, you want us to try to look at everything, again, I mean, go deep dive on all of it?
I don't think anybody's opposed to anything, I like the idea of having staff in the morning and afternoon, I know we do already at Maple and Bartlett, and even the high school, kids can come here as early as seven at the high school, it's more of a middle school and maybe Glen Lake, but that would definitely give flexibility to our parents with work, because their employees, employers may not be the best worker.
We need a M O U to do that, so...
A what?
End of the school day.
Well, so...
Then M O U.
I think not for this, but it would impact employees' current hours, it would potentially push people who may not be in a benefits-eligible position into being benefit-eligible as well as pension-retirement-eligible.
Yeah, it's complicated too.
There are some unintended financial repercussions for this, but, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I think we can do that for parents, given... And, and so I had hoped that maybe this was going to be, you know, a few days, you know, and then we kind of get back on track. And I'm still kind of a little hopeful that that might happen. But right now, they're so short on drivers, they have less than half the drivers we need.
Wow.
So if nobody opposes to anything that was presented, can you start looking at other options or looking at these and then come back to us? Or if you need us to make a decision before we can call?
I think, I think on some of these, you're going to be able, we'll be able to address a non-public session. Which I think will have, it'll, it'll have, I think, a positive impact to, to an extent. So.
For tonight?
I think we do need to go, yeah. Because I, I need the board's approval before I can do things contractually with, with the Truck Center.
All right, so we're done with this discussion?
Yep, for now.
All right, so starting with old business, so we can try to move through. But the last board meeting, we had first reads for policies. Tonight was just if anybody had questions. Second reads will come February 21st to move forward. So does anybody have any questions on any of the policies now?
I, you know, I had a lot.
Right, we went through a lot of your.
And I met with Denise. I have, I still have some concerns that I feel should be said at the meeting, but it, it's 10 o'clock and I'm.
It is, and we have quite a bit to do.
It's, I, I'm concerned if you, I can just say a couple of things and see. I don't want to. I am concerned with, there was one about, I think it's E B C F, the regulation for code, the pandemic thing.
Yeah.
I have no problem with the policy about how to handle it. I am concerned that we are stating a specific pandemic as opposed to something else or any kind of other health-related emergency that comes up that would cause us to be in, have a response plan. I, I, I don't particularly care for a policy stating a specific virus as opposed to being more generic about being able to do these things. I know we had to put a response plan to the state and all that stuff, but this is a policy. It's going to be here forever. And, and I don't have any objection to the authorities given in it, the actions that can be taken. I just, my concern is that it's a specific pandemic mentioned in it, and I think it should be more generic. Let's just make two cents on that one. Ah, I had, I had other ones.
Does anyone else, do you have more?
I did. Other people might have.
Does anybody else have questions? Did you have any questions, Renee?
Oh, anywhere in our policies, and I think it was in a couple of them, we say, we discussed this before. District will provide information or, I mean, do we want to require that we're actually physically handing people a piece of paper? Or can it also say it's available on the website? It's available not just, so that someone can't say, you didn't hand me.
Right.
My handbook. But that the policy is very clear that these are all on, online and you can go get any of the information at any time. Not requiring that we hand a piece of paper to somebody.
Which policy were you specifically talking about?
I think it was, I think that idea was in a couple of them.
I remember when we talked about it, Alan, was J I C.
J I C? Oh, the student conduct form. Parent-student handbooks.
They do. Yeah, it's all.
So, but, I, just, just. Yeah. So that the policy covers us and relieves us of that potential liability? And there were a couple of financial ones, but Scott's looking into that. The idea about having some review of the parent groups and the booster clubs monies.
Right.
I think Scott's taking, addressing that.
Yeah.
Working on that. Oh, the teacher stipend thing.
Yeah, you and I talked.
Right, we spoke about that. We had, when we first came up months ago, we were trying to encourage people and giving them an incentive to come and be a representative of the staff for their building at our board meetings. And that's, if I remember correctly, that's where the idea of let's provide a stipend for them coming here and spending their own time, doing this and bringing in information back. But, and I understand, I, I didn't even think of it. This is not the same type of activity for a staff member to do as all the others are, where you're dealing with children, planning for an activity or that kind of thing. It's not the same type of, of thing we're asking them to do, task. But I, I, I still, I guess the big question is, why do we want staff here? What do we expect them to be doing, sitting here and taking information back? Because we certainly don't want to put anybody on the spot.
Right.
Asking them questions about what's going on in the building kind of thing. But I just feel like if we want staff to be here and give us input, and we have received that from staff in the past who speak up or clarify things, my thinking is, we're asking them to come here, that.
Well, it's a volunteer position. It's offered.
Yeah.
They can choose to do it or not. After they speak their commendations, they don't have to stay. Usually, most of them do stay.
Right.
And it was decided from the subcommittee that this was not a stipend position.
Right.
Because of what their expectations were.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just know that there's a value because we've heard from the current representative. And back when Kathy Sargent was doing it, we heard from her many times, it was very helpful.
Well, and Mrs. Cruitt from the middle school.
Right. So, yes, it is different. I, I don't know, as a board, as, when I was a teacher in another district, I probably would have loved to have said at the board meetings, but you're giving up your time away from your family outside, not even connected to the hours of your workday. I, I don't know, I just thought I'd raise it.
I hear what you're saying, but it was the subcommittee's recommendation.
I, I know.
Unless somebody else on the board feels the same way, we could bring it back.
That's why I'm asking the board how they feel about it, just.
I, I feel that if they should get something for coming here, but like, like our student representative knows, it takes a long time. I mean, here we are, still all, all out of the day and night. And we get, I think, a lot of information and insight from what they do day to day here. Like often times we say, we used to say all the time, like, what do you think of this question that we're pondering over? And they would say, well, this is what it is, and this is how we see it in school. And it's valuable to us to have the insight of, of those that are actually doing it and not just us that are on the outside looking at it. And they have contact with the students. They have contact with administration, the schools. They have contact with the curriculum that they're working on. And they have really information that's valuable to us. I think that they should be rewarded for extra time that they took. I would not have a problem with it at all. Also, I would like to see more schools do it. More like committees maybe having the teacher represented. Because I think they have valuable insight and valuable information that would be helpful in making decisions along the way.
Anyone else? China, on this particular month? Go ahead, Caleb.
Would there be a way to, because I know, I, I get the sense that some members of the board want to compensate teachers for spending their time here with us? Would everybody do that without making it part of this policy that we're discussing?
No, we'd have to change the policy.
You'd have to do it here?
Well, you would have to, if you go back to policy review, we would discuss it and then come back.
I just know back when we were discussing the budget under the district line, there was discussion there about adding online for teacher rep? I don't know if that is out of the bounds of, because it's like, if it's different from a normal, our normal stipend process?
Right, right, yeah, it definitely goes through the union, right, with the teachers, yeah. So it is definitely a process to do. Shane, did you want to comment in a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So I've been a teacher and I've been heavily involved in my communities that I've worked in. And it's my opinion that to be a part of the board is you're offering your insight. It's something you're passionate about. It's something you want your voice heard. I've never thought that a teacher should be paid to come to the school board meetings. I don't know, that's just my opinion. And I think that's coming from my background of going to board meetings and sitting there till 10, 11 o'clock at night and because it's something that I'm passionate about and it's something that I care about. And I think, you know, we're lucky that we do have a teacher rep. But at the same time, if we're going to pay a teacher rep, then someone like Caleb, what do they get, right? But it, so it, I just think it creates kind of slippery slope. And I love having teacher reps on the board. I just don't know if compensation should be part of it. Also with collective bargaining, things like that, does that create issues? How do you choose who the teacher rep is because that person's being compensated? So it's, there's a lot of components to it.
There is, definitely. Dan, did you want to comment on any of it? Because you were on that committee here.
I was of the same opinion of Shane somewhat, that I, I appreciate the insight that teachers can give us during the meetings. But uncompensated is my current preference. I would like it to go through the entire process. I don't want to usurp that process that we had started earlier, where we were finding out everybody and everything and the step in the levels. Just because it's a school board, I, I have a problem jumping forward with that.
Thank you, Dan. Alan, go ahead.
It's on the, it's on the pandemic policy, if I may.
Okay.
As I read through it, it read to me as if it were an S A U policy as opposed to a Goffstown School District policy. They can be exactly the same, okay? But this policy is going into the Goffstown School District's policies manual, and yet it's talking about the S A U and New Boston. And as I'm reading through it, I'm thinking, shouldn't this be Goffstown specific? So I.
Alan, it's a regulation. Remember we talked about it being a regulation?
Right.
Okay, so we have a policy which is different from regulations actually.
Well, even in the regulation, why is it?
It was because it was that emergency meeting that we had.
Okay.
We had the entire S A U board there on that March 16th, 2020.
Right.
Right, it was a Sunday. We had both school districts sitting there.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
New Boston in Boston is under the umbrella of S A U 19.
Right.
So that's why that was put into as a regulation for the, to the policy.
And, and I have no problem with the regulation.
I know, you wanted to say Goffstown.
Just, this is Goffstown School District. Not, S A U policy book has the S A U policy. New Boston has the New Boston. And Goffstown, I, I was very confused by why is Goffstown's policy regulation talking about the other two districts? The other two entities that have their own policies? And that maybe it's just a technicality that doesn't need to be bothered by anybody, but I just thought that that was very odd. So I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else have any questions for the first reads? All right, so they'll come back in February to be voted on. So we have new business. We have handbooks. So Denise sent out all this information to be through. I know Ginny and Rhonda have some stuff that we need to approve tonight.
Okay, in our last meeting, um, in January, we discussed the handbooks. And you want to start off by discussing the first part?
Yeah, vision and mission. So again, as I mentioned before, that the, the way that the board's vision and mission is mentioned in the handbooks is not consistent. And we'll actually here say another handbook contains school board or district information. I, I believe there is some there, but the bottom line is.
It's all taken on.
Yeah, it's not required by policy. And the statutes also reveal that there's no requirement for this to be in the handbooks. So given the fact that one, where we don't have an official vision, vision and mission statement and that it's not ready, that we just wanted for the board a recommendation for the time being that if we do remove, whatever's in there will be removed for all of the handbooks. And it will just be the school individual's vision and mission. If we get our, our vision and mission done prior to what needs to publish, we can decide whether or not even need to go in the handbook or if we want it someplace else. So, so the, the recommendation that we'd like to bring forward is that if we remove them all of the handbooks.
All right, so you need a motion to have the mission, the board's mission statement removed from all the handbooks?
Or do we, the recommendation is to remove the handbook. So I think if you want to do this specifically.
Is there, if it's up to you?
Or we want to just do the handbooks, you know?
I'd just do the handbooks as a whole. We don't have to go through each one.
Okay. And our recommendation is to remove this, so. The second one that we had questions on or wanted to explain is the emergency closures, snow days, distance learning. And at this time, the schools have included the language that we have been using. Those are the email messages that we've been getting. The superintendent's recommendation is that the language be included with the disclaimer that it may be removed or revised after the closing clients of distant learning days as currently implemented have been evaluated. So if we decide to have snow days instead of in-school days, we may remove that. The last one is, there's a request of one principal to remove policy K B A and the family-school partnership contract. These documents have been in the elementary school handbooks for 14 years, and the determination was made to leave them in for this year and revisit as a part of the revision process next year. And as you've read, these are, basically it's a partnership with parents in the school. You know, your responsibilities are responsibilities for.
Is that what K B A is? It's in the state, it's our policy and it addresses that?
It is listed on the last page of Maple Avenue. Basically the language specifically. And we decided to leave it in for this being for so long and then remove it next year. Or in fact, more discussion is made and we decide to get.
Would you like a motion to support these three recommendations?
I think this is going to be part of our whole.
Is there more?
Handbook thing? Okay.
I'll go over it quickly though, because everybody was giving us. And basically the changes are language and updates to make the books be pertinent to next year. And Glen Lake, the cover dates are changed to 22, 23. The change of contents adds the emergencies, snow days, distant learning under attendance and admission. Page four, the updated, we updated the new assistant superintendent. Pages, excuse me, eight and nine, remove the school board statement of philosophy. Goodness, philosophy, Percy and Eve recommendation, which is spoken up for. Page 13, added paragraph on emergency. Page thirteen, added paragraph on emergency closings, no day, distant learning with a disclaimer that it may be removed. Page fifteen is video conference added to conference options. Um, uh, page fifteen, and all of these books have said that the, or the elementary ones, said that, um, conferences would be in-person. Um, this is adding video conferencing for students. Um, in Bartlett, we have Bartlett's book. Um, Bartlett on page two added the emergency closure of the snow day with a disclaimer. Page four updated the assistant superintendent. Page five, our staff edits and changes. Page six, there were some learning corrections. Page seven and eight, removed Goffstown school board info that Rheta spoke of. Page ten, added times for clarity, um, just times of in and out and dismissal times, um, to make them more clear. Page twelve, added a paragraph for emergency closure days, as in another school. Page fourteen, added language for clarity. Uh, page sixteen, committee request that the language regarding in-person conferences be an option. So all of the handbooks are the same. Page twenty-eight, updated parking locations, which is includes, um, Dollar General across the street, which they have so nicely, um, made available to Bartlett. And move on to-
Hey Heather?
Yes, Dan.
Yes, Dan.
So the one thing I didn't notice, Ginny, is, um, Family Dollar.
Yes.
They agreed to let us use the parking lot because I guess Senator Pinnard is no longer letting us do that?
Because who's not?
Senator Pinnard, the, uh, uh, next door.
Chris Mall.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know what the reason was. I just know that they, um, didn't have, allow us to use parking there. So it's because of next door, just allowed it. Okay, thank you.
I think that's fantastic and it's just to say thank you to the business for letting us do that. I, I think it's a public thing that I wanted to do and say thank you.
And I'm sure that Bartlett has done that, but I think probably if you wouldn't mind sending a note to them, Janie, from us, um, to Dollar, Dollar General, I think it is?
Family Dollar.
No, it's, um, it's the other one, it's Family Dollar.
Family Dollar, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Family Dollar, from, um, Bartlett, is allowing us to use their parking, um.
So maybe with Maple, some of these we've already gone over.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Just highlights once we have it.
Um, okay, uh. And on to Maple. They put, they updated, um, the Hampshire Department of Education ranking for people. On page fifteen, they added homework policy codes. Um, on page seventeen, they corrected the second step link. Um, on page twenty-one, they updated the building securities alert for clarity. Um, page twenty-four, they updated address code. Code simplifies putting responsibility to address with administration. Page twenty-seven, updated the anti-bullying link. And page thirty-two, requested policy and partnership removal. Um, that's what we spoke about before. So that's Maple Avenue.
Security policy.
Yes, so that brings us on to-
Another school.
Another school. And, um, Mountain View. Uh, on the cover ba, page, the quote was updated. Um, page three, the principal's letter is to be updated and replaced by the new principal coming in. Um. Page five, general edits with the school board, same thing removed. Page twenty, changed guidance to school counselor, which is, matches the certifications. Page twenty-five, that's the same thing. Um. And that's all with Mountain View. Moving on to the high school. The changes, um, page three, high set was updated from the language used before. Um. Okay, page twelve and thirteen, updated the science requirements for lines obtained through program of studies. Page twenty, uh, thirty-five, they updated the information center to more accurately reflect staffing hours. Um, the shift of database access to school's duality in July. The availability to support struggling and failing students within the information center structure by removing grades as a restriction for students accessing the space. This provides more flexibility for instructional supports and resources. There used to be a policy where you had to have, um, a grade above sixty-five to be able to get a library pass. And this basically, they would like to switch that, that if there's so many different, um, things available and resources available in the hot, in the, um, information center now, that any student can have access. As in fact, they're coming in to do work and access, um, what's in here for them to use. And struggling students and failing students, um, should be able to use those references as well. So that was changed. And that is the end. Do we have any questions from anybody?
Do they have any questions for Ginny on any of these changes?
There's really nothing big at all. We've gone over the handbook so many times and gotten out all of those.
So we need a motion to move everything you recommended forward?
Yes, if I could have the motion, um, to move these forward. Uh, with a couple of little things that to be changed if necessary, uh, before the books are printed.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
I, I have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
On the high school, the one thing I didn't notice was, is there an index?
Um, index?
I don't, yeah, I don't see it in the electronic file. Like the other ones say, here's, yeah, the index is, you know, where do you go for certain things?
Um, actually, no, there does not look like there is one.
I, I thought there was, so I thought maybe we were just missing the beginning pages.
No, I think you're correct, Dan, that's not one there.
That's, that's what I'm, or we'll call it table of contents, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Um.
And did it just not make?
Let's look into that, because it would be helpful, probably, yeah.
Let's just make a motion to approve the handbook with the addition of a table of contents into the high school handbook.
I like it.
And I'll, I'll let the rest of the cases do that.
Perfect, they have a motion from Rheta, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, any further discussion?
Thanks for that, Ted, Shane.
All right, C and N, I'm going to do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Jared.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Heather, yes, motion passed. Thank you to C and E for doing that. That's a big undertaking. All right, so, um, as Brian stated before, the calendar is going to be put off until our next meeting. We don't need to make any decisions on that now, they still have to tweak some stuff. So moving on to the annual future business leader of America, they have a trip.
They do, so I am seeking the board's approval for an overnight field trip for the future business leaders of America. Krista Scarlett is our outstanding faculty advisor, who has been doing this program for a long time. I think Ginny Roy is going to attend with her as well. The field trip is on March thirty-first through April first. This is, um, an annual trip that the board has approved every year for the state level conference. They would be staying at the Doubletree Hotel in Manchester. Approximately thirty students attending, um, for a cost of around a hundred and seventy-nine dollars plus some additional fees, so maybe around two hundred dollars. So we would be asking for the board's approval of this overnight field trip.
Anybody have any questions? Is there any other?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
So there's an estimate of three hundred dollars for transportation. If memory serves, we actually, it was only the, um, everybody kind of brought their own vehicle because it's on the other side of town. It's on the other side of the water, the Merrimack River. Um, do we still think that's an estimate or is that just there as a placeholder?
I think that's probably there as a placeholder. Um, I, I can't imagine that we're running a bus there and in all likelihood wouldn't have a driver. Sorry, was it too soon? But, yeah, I, I-
Yeah, no, well, that, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I, I think that's just really a rough estimate.
Yes, it is. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Motion to approve the field trip as presented.
Thank you, Jared, do I have a second? By Ginny, any further discussion? C and N, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed. Have a great time.
Thank you.
All right, staffing.
So everyone should have a copy of the staffing sheet. There are a number of notifications for track changes. And I'd like to extend our appreciation and congratulations to this terrific group of teachers. And if they have not gotten a letter yet, we will certainly do that, so those are just for notifications only. And for approvals, we have a, um, a new teacher for the library media specialist here at Goffstown High School. This position is being recommended for Dana Benner. And we'd like to make this retroactive. Um, Dana has been functioning as a substitute. So if the board is so inclined to approve this, I'd like to make that retroactive to January eighteenth, which was last week. We have a resignation for our H B A C technician in John Rice. And we have a nomination to replace him in Brett Pear?
Pyar.
Pyar, thank you, Scott. And we have a nomination for, um, a volunteer for the basketball program, John Gessler.
Gessler.
Gessler, thank you. This is my opportunity to butcher people's names. And lastly, for non-sports nomination, we have Sam O'Brien for Model Congress and Krista Scarlett for F B L A. Both outstanding programs.
All right, go ahead, Jared.
Just for the teacher nomination, was this an open position that we filled with a substitute in the short term?
No, it was, it was a position that we found the candidate that we wanted to bring in and asked them to come in before tonight's meeting to start to get into that role.
This was an open position, where are you budgeting?
This was an open position, correct. So this was somebody that, um, the high school was excited to, to bring on board and they asked Dana to start a little early as a sub.
Any other questions? All right, so we'll need a motion to approve-
Move to approve nominations as presented?
Um, nominations and resignation, should we do one at a time? Because there's both.
Approve the staffing sheet.
Yeah, you can do them in one, if you please.
Nomination and resignation, nominations and resignation as presented.
With Dana being, um, retroactive seventy, uh, waiting?
As presented, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so I have a motion from Alan, do I have a second? Uh, by Ginny, any further discussion? All right, C and N, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed. All right, other business that may legally come before the meeting? Oh, Rheta?
Yes, we need to do that, we should do that before we go into non-public.
Right now, we're all exhausted.
Should have been before the meeting.
All right, so before we go into non-public, um, we do have our deliberative authority seventh, but we have a scheduled school board meeting after, if there's stuff we need to have done. All right, so-
Heather, did we agree that we're going to get information out about that deliberative session? Where it is, when it is, what it's about? We did agree to that, okay.
Oh, yeah, the administration will take care of that.
We're, we're going to put it in the newsletters.
Yep, and posted.
Yeah, and this is not something that, um, and Scott and I are also going to do some, some videos about all the warrant articles, but we'll do that after deliberative.
Okay.
Yeah, we can put it on Facebook pages and there's, there's other mediums.
So, um, we're supposed to go under C for a couple of things. Is there anything else?
Well, if we wanted to talk about the contract that Mr. Gross had spoken of, we would do that under RSA ninety-one, A three-two-A. Um, so if we were, if we wanted to-
For C, one of them is fast. I'm wondering because of the late hour, if we put off your evaluation.
That's what I would make.
I, I don't see that everybody is going to want to do this, so maybe February seventh, depending on how late it is, maybe we can plan to do it then. Or-
Oh, gee.
Send me everything. Alan, you already sent it to me, if everybody else can email it and then I'll try to compile it and get it.
Yeah, it's got to get to SAU by a certain time.
Yeah, or just behind this year.
So I, I think we could just go under C, I, I think-
To do the question and then go on.
I think we could probably do both.
Okay, so I need a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one, A three-two-C. Matters which are discussed on public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such a person requests it. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy if based on inability to pay or property of the applicant. All right, Alan, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, so we are in non-public. Caleb?
Do we want to get a picture with you?
Yes.
Yes.